Good evening. We're calling the April 8, 2024 Town Council Committee of the Whole Special Meeting Agenda to Order at 6:04 PM. Roll call. All are present except for Counsel McBride and Counsel Merritt, and we have Counsel Bordalyn online. Onto new business, 2024-247-1, FYE 2025 proposed budget. We are on the capital projects which begin on page 214.
Counsel Bordalyn says she's having trouble hearing. Counsel Bordalyn, can you hear me?
I can now, thanks.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay, so up first, I believe it is Rhodes. That is on page 215. Counselor Parker, would you like to move a number?
For CIP Town Pavement Management Program, number one Rhodes, I move $1,300,000. So move.
Second, Gajewski.
I have Parker moved and seconded by Gajewski. One second, let me, I gotta get my notes here ready. Okay. Again, I'm just gonna reiterate that as the previous meetings, the budget rule is one round of speaking promotion on the floor. Do we have any comments? Or Mr. Hanover, would you like to introduce the road budget to begin with?
We're on 1A, correct?
Excuse me?
1A?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, good evening. Greg Hanover, Director Public Works. This is our annual appropriation rehabilitation. Several years ago, we started doing it in the Capitol when the bond ran out. Fortunately, the council in the past has been kind enough to give us the money, and we've been keeping up with our roads. This year, we're asking for the 1.3. It's slightly up from last year. That's due to the increase in asphalt prices. And our PCI, which is our pavement condition index, is starting to slip slightly below 70, so we want to get that back up. This year, we're proposing to do a number of roads in what I call the Wayne Road neighborhood. This is downtown Groton. There's about eight roads in there. It serves about 100 homes. Those roads are in pretty tough shape. The PCI is ranging from nine up to 30s and the 40s. So we'd like to go into the whole neighborhood and redo that whole thing. That's about 640,000. We also have Industrial Drive. This is probably one of the worst roads in town with a PC of eight. It serves just a few houses and also the Amtrak facility, but more importantly, it's part of a future bike path that Parks and Rec is working on. So we want to pave this before we get the bike path going. Then the other two are Colonel Legerd Highway, which is, we'll be doing from Route 184 to the Town Line Legerd. That's a town collector road. It has a PCI of 26, which is probably the worst for any of our collector roads. So we're going to do that one. And then the last one is Culver Avenue, which is a PCI 21. That serves a number of condominiums and apartments down at the bottom of that from Route 1.
Thank you. Do we have any comments? Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Hanover, I appreciate you in providing the PCI score for all the roads. Do you have a document already completed of all the roads and what their PCI score is?
Yeah, when we did the initial survey about four years ago, every road, including the City Garden Long Point, we got a number for every road. And so we have, every road, we have a number for from then. And then there's a deterioration curve that kind of follows. It's kind of flat when roads are in good shape, but then it starts dropping off the worse the road gets. So they've been dropping down along that curve. Probably in the next year or two, we should probably do another round of inspections just to reset the PCI numbers again. But we do have numbers for every road in town. And we use a computer algorithm. We have a program that shows us where we should be focusing our funds on.
Just if you or the town manager could send that to me in an email, I'd like to just take a look at it. I do, based on these PCI numbers that you provided us and in our town faculty, it's a current average is 70, with 100 being perfect. These are all well below 70. So I trust, except the exception of one, but it's an extension. It's one connected road, so I'm not too worried about it. So I will be in favor of the $1.3 million motion on the floor, and I thank you for providing the detail.
Counsel Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon. Have you done a survey of the subterranean utilities in all these streets? Are we going to do that at the same time maybe, or do we have to dig these streets up later?
We send our lists out to Groton Utilities Aquarium just to make sure that we coordinate. They ask us for what roads we have coming up, and so we work with utilities so we're not going back in and ripping them up again.
Are we pretty good on that for these roads?
Yes. In fact, the Wayne Road neighborhood, Groton Utilities, has gone in just in the last few years and replaced, I think, most of the water mains in there.
Okay. Just don't want to put the cart before the horse.
Yep. Neither do I.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to just comment on this, just because we do have a lot of new counselors and RTM members. And if they're watching tonight, historically, from what I understood a long time ago, it was just very easy for the RTM to cut the roads when it came up in the budget. So what used to happen in the town is they would then go to bonding because that was easier, and we could get bonding over a long period of time, a lot of roads. And then we realized that maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, there's only so much paving you can do in a year. Is that correct?
Correct.
And about that much paving equates to about, I guess, the $1.3 million. Is that correct?
That's correct. And it's also the number that we're looking at to keep our PCI level. We can maintain that level of road condition.
Right. So Counselor Parker and I were on a previous council that had decided instead of bonding all the time, we would try and put this into our budget and then keep it going and hope that the RTM does not cut it and sees the necessity for us to do this as a yearly thing. And this way, we're also not paying interest on it as a bond. So it's pay-as-you-go kind of thing and not having to put out extra money on top of bonding for interest. So that was the reasoning for that. So I'm hoping this also will get through the RTM as a whole. Any other comments or questions?
Okay, we'll take a vote on, I don't know how to call this, other than just Capital Fund 1A. Is that what I would call it? CIP 1A. Okay, so we have Counsel Bordalyn online, so we will be doing a roll call vote. And Counsel Bordalyn, your vote?
Aye.
Counsel Pacino?
Aye.
Counsel Russ?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Gajewski?
Aye.
Counsel Parker?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Seven to zero to zero. Onto our next item, which is CIP 1F. That is on page 216. Counsel Gajewski, would you like to move that?
I'd like to make a motion of $50,000 for CIP 1F.
Okay. Moved by Gajewski, seconded by Russ. Would you like to give us a synopsis on this item?
Sure. You know, over the past couple of years, I guess, maybe even more recently, the traffic authority has been getting some complaints from residents about the truck parking on Water Street because of the increase in the number of restaurants right in that particular area. And there is no truck loading zone or unloading zone there now, so these small box trucks, they try to stagger their schedule, but that doesn't always work. So they come in and they park either on the street or on the sidewalk, completely blocked the sidewalks, so pedestrians are forced out into the road. So the traffic authority asked me to take a look at it and see where we might be able to install a truck loading/unloading zone. And it just so happens that just south of the Mystic Restaurant Building, there's four parking spaces there now. They're perpendicular to the road. We actually leased those spaces from the Mystic Art Association, as well as the land the building's on. So we took a look, and we could get those four spaces, take them out, and create a parallel truck loading zone out of the traveled way, wrap the sidewalk around it so people can get around when the trucks are in there. And also, we thought that we could also sign that for two parallel car parking spaces in the off-hours, at the evening and on the weekends when the trucks aren't there. So of those four spaces, one of them is really police-only, so we're only really going to lose one space in the off-hours. And we have the three regulars, so if we have two parallel, that's just a net loss of one. So we're really not losing a lot of parking, and we feel that it's really going to improve the traffic flow, getting the trucks out of the travelway and off the sidewalks down there. This is a state road. I did run it by DOT. They had no issues with doing this. They said it'd be completely fine. We just have to probably negotiate with the Mystic Art Association on our lease agreement, just kind of come up with some kind of an amendment or something so that they would allow that.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When you say "parallel," you parallel to the road or parallel to each other perpendicular to the road?
Parallel to the road. So the trucks would pull into like a bump out, so to speak.
Okay.
Be paved. They just pull in like parallel parking, unload. It'd be long enough that they could put their ramps out, unload their stuff, get back in the truck, and just keep going.
Sounds like a plan, but my suggestion, my question, not my suggestion, my question is, can we do that for one vehicle this year?
Well, it would be just for one truck.
I thought it was going to be for two trucks.
No, it's just one truck. It's big enough that we could sign it so that two cars could park there in the off-hours. I'm sorry if I was.
All right.
I thought you were understanding that, but it's just for one truck.
Gotcha. All right, then. All right. Getting back my gun.
Thank you. Counsel Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Hanover, have you had discussion with the Mystic Art Association about doing this project?
I have not.
I had reached out to them. The director thought it wouldn't be an issue. However, she had to talk to her board, and I have not heard back.
And then, has there any engagement with the merchants, whether they would rather have public parking spaces or a drop-off loading zone?
I haven't. I think the town manager, have you talked to Bruce Flex all about it?
Yeah, I had a meeting with the chamber director, and he thought it was well worthwhile to do at some point.
Okay, so right now, I feel that this would be too rushed, so I'm going to make an amended motion for $0. And I would then consider making a referral to the Economic Development Commission to get some more information.
I would second that. Moved by Gajewski, seconded by Pacino. We have conversation on the amended motion. Okay, I'll speak. I also am in favor of this. I think it would be wise to hold off for now until we get more information, as well as send it to Economic Development. And as they told us, if we give them a referral, they would appreciate that, to give them direction on trying to get business input. So I think that fits in line with that. Okay, no more hands. I will take a vote. Counsel Bordalyn?
Which one are we voting on?
1F. We have zero to out and ask for a referral to Economic Development.
I'll abstain.
Counsel Pacino?
Aye.
Counsel Russ?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Gajewski?
Aye.
Counsel Parker?
Aye.
All right, that passes six to zero to one. All right, onto our next item. Drainage and watershed protection, which is 2A, culvert rehabilitation on page 217. Mr. Hanover?
Okay, we're looking at a couple of cross culverts on River Road. These culverts are very old, and they're starting to fail, and they have been failing for a while. We've been trying to get this in the budget for some time now, and I think the time is right with all the resiliency efforts going on. One of the culverts is at Binless Road. There's a small pond there that drains in and out. Binless Brook empties into that. And then there's another culvert. It's hard. There's no real landmark there. It's between Houses 83 and 901. It's kind of at a sharp curve where the river is right up against the road. And coincidentally, the road elevations at both these culverts is very low. And we've had a number of instances in the last year or so where the road has flooded at these two locations, making the road pretty much impassable. So we want to get some funds to start the design and the permitting to replace these culverts because they are holding fairly, but also look at raising the road at these two locations so that we can make the road passable during the extreme high tides and storms. That's really the purpose of this project.
Counsel Jones, would you like to move the number on 2A on page 217?
Project 2A culvert rehabilitation for FYE 2025 for $200,000. So move.
Second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Counsel Russ. Okay, any conversation? Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hanover. This is opposite House Number 901 by Blind Ross Road. About how far down River Road is?
Binless Road is, as you're heading out downtown, is before you get to the I-95 overpass. There's an intersection there.
It's past the Peace Park.
Yeah, just there. And then the other one is after you go under 95, heading up towards Old Mystic. Maybe half a mile up, there's a very sharp curve in the road. I mean, the river is literally almost at the elevation of the road at high tide.
I remember, I think Tom Manager Bert mentioned, when we've talked about River Road, that some might have to raise the utilities and the poles and things. Is that what you see happening here, or is it just?
Yeah, depending on how high we have to raise the road, I could see possibly raising some utilities, yes.
So the $200,000 is for design?
For the design and permitting, yeah. Yeah, that's not the construction cost.
And that'll be determined somewhere in 2027 or somewhere?
Yeah, we would certainly, once we get to construction, I did talk to Megan Granato about some grants or anything for this. And for this type of work, it's really not a lot out there. I mean, keep our eyes open for construction. Maybe there'll be more when we get shovel-ready plans, more grants available.
Do you see this as sort of a solution for other parts of River Road too? I mean, kind of piecemeal a little bit?
Potentially. I mean, I think these are the two worst spots, but it could potentially be some other areas.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm just going to say very quickly that we have heard from our residents on River Road who do have a lot of flooding issues down there, to the point where they can't even leave their roads. So I am in favor of doing the design work and checking into what can be done. And also taking care of our culverts, because we seem to have a lot of them that want to give us problems. So thank you very much. We'll start the voting. Counsel Bordalyn?
For me, this is a no-brainer. It's obviously way overdue, and I'm in full support of it. That road has gotten worse over the last 20 years, and there's a lot more work that needs to be done. I think this is just the tip of the iceberg, but absolutely in support in any structural improvements of raising of that road to support what is coming on. I am concerned. I am supporting this, but I hope that there's a master plan for River Road. It is a very well-traveled, touristy kind of road. It's very scenic, and we need to come up with a master plan. So that's my question. Is there a master plan on the development of that road?
There is no master plan at this point. Certainly, as a scenic road, any improvements, we have to come to the council, have a public hearing, go through that whole process. So even these culverts, once we get plans going, we would have to come before the council. But when we hire an engineer, we could have him maybe start looking at other areas. Potentially, we could do some road raising, see if there's potential for that in other areas besides these two culverts. But I don't envision that it would ever, really, the character of the road would ever change.
Yeah, I wasn't looking at the character, more so just looking up as a master plan of budgeting to fix the whole problem, looking at it from point A to point B with the middle and the end at the beginning. But that's something that we should bring forward to the council. I can put a request in. I think that needs to be something that we address systemically as a whole plan and vision that we're personaling out and budgeting for. So anyway, I'm in support of this tonight, but I hope to see some type of plan come forward. Thank you.
Counsel Russ, did you have your hand up?
I did. Actually, many of my questions have been answered, but what is the PCI for River Road?
I think it's around, I want to say 40. It's probably going to be coming up in the next few years. So that's why we're trying to address some of these bigger issues now.
So what I looked at with this is the hope is that we can get all those things, like Counsel Pacino mentioned, all the other issues done beforehand, and then hopefully get this paved in the next couple of years. You're thinking maybe two years for River Road?
Probably more than two years. It's a 44.
44, okay.
I'm definitely in support of doing as much as we can for this road. I know that there's a lot of concern for it. So thank you so much for addressing this.
Counsel Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am also in support of this. Counsel Russ actually stole my question of what was the PCI for the road. But I will be, so I am a runner. I've run on River Road multiple times. It is in need of shape. It's good to hear that it could be coming up in the next few years for repair. It's got flooding, and it is also home to the Mystic Irish 5K. So just putting that out there. So I'll be in favor of the motion, and thank you, Director Hanover, for presenting this project this year.
Any more comments? Okay, we'll take a vote on 2A, $200,000. Counsel Bordalyn?
Aye.
Counsel Pacino?
Aye.
Counsel Russ?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Gajewski?
Aye.
Counsel Parker?
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero to zero. All right, up next is local drainage. It's 2A, local drainage improvements, new installations, and...
2B. 2B.
Oh my gosh, 2B. I'm so, yeah, sorry.
Oh, no.
That's on page 218. And then Counsel Russ, would you like to move that number?
Yes, CIP 2B. I move the number of $350,000 for local drainage improvement, new installations.
Second.
Moved by Russ, seconded by Parker. Would you like to give us another synopsis?
There's three components to this. This is really to deal with flooding in some areas and resiliency. The first is, we want to look at the downtown Mystic Pearl and Gravel Street. We're requesting $200,000 for that, for engineering and design plans to address the flooding on those two streets. As you know, we just had a Mystic Resiliency Study was just completed, and they had a number of action items in their report. I think there was 14 or 15 of them. This money is to look and address action items 1, 3, and 4. What those are is, one is putting tide valves on the outlets of the pipes that drain into the Mystic River. They are almost all below the high-tide line, and we've actually had, at some extreme high tides, the drainage system working in reverse and letting the river come in even during non-storms and flooding people's yards and streets. So one of the recommendations was to put these tide flapper valves on these outlets. So that would be one thing we'd look at. The second is, the drainage system in both Pearl and Gravel is, it's been haphazardly put together probably over the last 100 years or more. We've got pipes that go through people's, literally under people's garages and everything else. So we would look at redoing the whole drainage system, new catch spaces, new pipes, to try to eliminate some of the flooding. And then the third thing is, there is a large area to the west of Pearl Street, up on top of the hill there. That whole area drains down through, a lot of it through Pearl Street's drainage system. That adds a lot of water, and it doesn't necessarily have to come through Pearl Street's system. You could have a disconnection so that the upper watershed has its own outlet pipe or do some other retention, detention, green infrastructure things. That was one of the other action items that the report recommended. So what we're trying to do now is kind of take the next step and start actually getting some plans and permits to start implementing some of the items sooner rather than later for addressing the flooding downtown. The second area we're looking at is the Willow Point neighborhood. We have $100,000. We have an engineer who's just finishing up a study for that whole area. And we have, again, some localized road floodings. We need to raise some roads, but that's going to involve looking at people's driveways, basements. So we really need to take a real in-depth look at what we need to do there. So that's what we're going to propose to do for the short term on solving their flooding problems. Unfortunately, if you look at some of the flood maps from 50 years from now, I think a lot of the area is going to be completely underwater even at low tide. And then the third one is the, we had some funding a couple of years ago. We took a preliminary look at, and we want to go through and get some final plans for the Shore Avenue over in the city. This is not to be confused with the Shore Avenue the city's looking at, which is down by Eastern Point Beach. We're looking at, we have, the golf course has a large area that drains through some people's yards that are on Shore Avenue. The engineer's studies show that there's a lot of undersized pipes, both in the city street and our, some pipes that we put in for the golf course project. So we want to just kind of take the next step and get some design plans and construction cost estimates so we can resolve the flooding issues for these people on Shore Avenue. That's it.
Thank you. Counsel Bordalyn?
I don't have my hand up?
You don't have your hand up?
No, it's not raised on my end.
I can see it on ours. Oh, okay, thank you. It's back on off.
It was off the whole time on my end.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hanover, or Director Hanover. It's nice to see action so quickly after release of our resiliency report. I think it's a pretty comprehensive report, and it's nice to see stuff happening. It's a nice way to sort of, we do a report, it values why we do these reports, and now you're doing the actions on those reports. So I congratulate you on getting that going. One of the questions I was going to ask you, but I think you answered it, was about the water coming down off of the hill. So that seems to be a pretty big area, and I know some residents up on that hill, and it's just a torrent of water sort of pours down during the storm. So that's good. I'd like that you're addressing that. And then the last one, Shore Avenue, I know a couple of years ago, we were talking about the flooding in some of those houses, in the backyards of some of those houses. Is this the same?
Yes.
So that flooding is continued?
It's continued, yes.
Do you have a solution, or are you just going to?
Well, I think the solution is unfortunately is going to be replacing, like I said, a lot of the pipes. And it's probably going to be a joint-city lot of the pipes, and it's probably going to be a joint city-town effort, once we get the plans, because I think a lot of the pipes that are in Shore Avenue, that outlet to the Thames River are all undersized, from what the preliminary plans are showing.
I know, I was just down there a couple of days ago during high tide, and it's, there's a lot of water coming up pretty high in that area, so.
Yeah.
Great, all right, thank you. I just, I'm just, it's nice to see the, the actions happening from the efforts, so, good.
Okay, Mr. Hanover, on Willow Point, it is a very low-lying neighborhood, is that correct?
Yes.
And the $100,000 is going to be to develop a plan for the options identified in the Willow Point area drainage study. And as you've even said, even in the future, this, this whole area could end up being underwater in the future. So when you're looking at these plans, are we going to be taking into consideration maybe the people who live there, what their future plans are if the, the water continues to rise, and maybe what they're looking for as solutions as well, and what the town can or cannot do to help with those solutions? Will it be a grander discussion than just trying to bring the roads above water level?
Yeah, that wasn't, I think that's for future discussion, that wasn't part of this plan. This plan was just to get past the immediate concerns, which, you know, there's some people that, I mean, they can almost not even get to their houses during certain tides.
Right. I have, I have seen that, that is...
So we're just trying to, you know, buy a few more years, I guess, if you will, before we have that bigger discussion of what happens to that whole area.
Okay. I will support this. I think it is important, and I think we do need, as a council and a town, to have that bigger discussion as well. So thank you. All right, I don't see any other hands. We'll take a vote on number 2B for $350,000.
Aye.
Council Boardaline?
Aye.
Council Pacino?
Aye.
Council Russ?
Aye.
Council Jones?
Aye.
Council Gieske?
Aye.
Council Parker?
Aye.
Okay, that passes seven to zero to zero. Up next, we are onto sidewalks. 3A replacement sidewalk construction on page 219. And up next would be Council Pacino.
All right, just one second. Let me find 3A. There we go. What do we got here? Yeah, 3A. Just in a different part of the book. I would like to move the number of $100,000 for sidewalks, replacement sidewalk construction, CIP 3A.
Second? Boardaline?
Moved by Pacino, seconded by Boardaline. Would you like to give a?
Sure. This is, you know, we've been getting, I think in previous years, we've been getting $75,000. We've upped it to $100,000 this year, every year, for basically taking existing sidewalks that are having trip hazards, that are in very bad shape, deteriorated to a point where they need to be replaced, driveway aprons that are causing trip hazards, and using this money to either replace them, grind the edges down if we, you know, which is, we've done a number of those, it's very cost-effective to do that. In fact, we just tried a new method of, there was a driveway apron that had sunk, and we actually pumped some expanding foam underneath it and raised it back up, which is, you know, evaluating whether that's cost-effective, so we can do some more of that. But that's, this is money is for really just fixing the existing sidewalks we have throughout town.
Okay. Council Gieske?
So they're, they're all around town. Is there any areas that are worse than others, or that, any areas that are better than others? Is it, or is it just, it is thoroughly spread out through the town?
It's really spread out through town. You know, we did go through, it was the last year, the year before, went up and down Route 1, you know, because it's a high pedestrian area, grinding down trip hazards when, you know, panels settle, you just grind it down. We're going to do Route 12, Judson Avenue area has some ones that are in pretty tough shape. I know Deerfield has some settlement. You know, there's different neighborhoods, and over time, you know, the concrete just spalls, or panels sink, you know, create trip hazards. You know, we unfortunately do get, you know, claims for trip and falls, you know, on our sidewalks, so we try to address this, you know, with all these areas as we can.
It's, it says, so what constitutes the length of a sidewalk? Is it the length of the road? Because is it, Judson Avenue is a pretty big road, but I don't know, I'm thinking of a short front street, in knowing, different-sized roads. So is it, does it vary on the size of the road, or, so basically, what, what constitutes as a sidewalk?
No, it's, it could be any, any road. I mean, whether it's a short road or a long road, if the, you know, if the sidewalks are in tough shape, you know, you'd go in and fix them.
Okay, thank you for answering my question, and I will be in favor of this motion.
Council Boardaline, your hand is up. Council Boardaline, you're on mute.
Sorry, froze. For me, you know, after, I remember former Council Bumgardner, state rep Bumgardner now, did the whole complete streets thing, so my question, this is just fixing existing problems, not adding any new structures, is that correct?
That's correct.
Council Boardaline, you're, I think you have a bad internet connection.
We try to make our town more businesses, accessibility, and having a walk...
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burt, I have a question.
Can you hear me?
Yes, are you, you were breaking up a bit. You're breaking up again. Council Boardaline, would you like to potentially log off and log back in, so you can try and get a better...
[inaudible] existing sidewalk, that, we should be doing that, it's the right of the, all right.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for Mr. Burt. I know we can use some LoCIP funds for some of these things, is that correct, for CIPs?
Yes, we have $200,000, $200,000.
$200,000?
Yes, now, we actually have $300,000, but I've held back $100,000 for a potential signalized crosswalk by Bridge, by the Bridge Market, because that's our most active, you know, accident-prone area for pedestrians. So I recommend just using $200,000. It can be pretty much any construction project, you can apply that to.
Okay, so as we go through these, we can try and...
I've just picked one out, yeah, to replace it with, yeah.
Try and come up with a total of about $200,000 to help offset some of these, and we have to apply it while we vote on it, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry to bring that up.
Like on this, you could just use, swap out the $100,000 general fund and say, we want to use half of the LoCIP for this one, and some other big project use half.
Okay, so just as counselors, we can keep that in mind as we're going forward on what we would like to pick and choose, or you could just potentially put all of LoCIP towards a big one, is that correct?
Yes, whatever you want.
So...
It's easier paperwork to have LoCIP going into one, or does it matter? Is that much to it, Craig?
No, it's not. They changed their rules this year, so they're just basically giving us the money. We don't have, it's not even reimbursable anymore.
And we went up a bit, too.
But it just might be easier to track if we kept it on one, so we can...
Yeah, I'd rather not do $10,000 here and $7,000 there.
Yeah, so as a council, maybe we could find a larger one somewhere in our budget that we can apply it to as we're going. But thank you, I, it just dawned on me. So I don't see any more comments.
I got one.
Oh, you do? Council Pacino?
I got a question. It seems to me that this CIP is very similar to 1A, the fixing and replacing. 1A is the roads, this one's the sidewalks.
Correct.
Why do we have two? Why do we need two? Why can't those be combined?
Because the roads often differ where the problem spots are. The roads don't, you know, you have set roads lengths you wouldn't need to do, whereas the sidewalks are all over the place, they don't line up.
Just an easy way to do it.
Yeah, better to track it that way.
Trying to separate the infrastructure out.
Enough said. All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hanover, how many miles of roads do we have in the town?
100.
100?
Mm-hmm.
Because I was just, I just took the 600, the 650,000 divided by 5,280, it was just 123 miles of sidewalk.
Well, it could be, there's a lot of sidewalks on both sides of the road, and this is also, the sidewalks and the state roads, we own and maintain those, like on Route 1, Route 12, 184, all those sidewalks, we are responsible for.
So things kind of overlap and go in different places?
Yes, that's where that number becomes a little higher than what we have for roads.
Okay, all right. And I think that's, I think that's my only question, just want to know how many, how many miles of sidewalks we got.
With that, we're going to take a vote on 3A replacement of sidewalk construction. Council Boardaline?
I have my hand up waiting to speak.
Well, you did have some internet issues, so go ahead, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just was saying that it's a no-brainer, it's our right to make sure that folks have accessibility to move about the community, let it be by car or by foot, and it's also, you know, under ABA standards, you know, accessibility is so important, and we are behind the curve in some areas, literally, and need a more sidewalk. So it's so important to fix what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. So we'll take a vote on number 3A for $100,000 for replacement of sidewalk construction. Council Boardaline?
Aye.
Council Pacino?
Aye.
Council Russ?
Aye.
Council Jones?
Aye.
Council Gieske?
Aye.
Council Parker?
Aye.
Okay, that passes seven to zero to zero. All righty, up next is Parks and Recreation, I believe. Thank you, Mr. Hanover.
I'll be back.
I, you shall. You definitely will. We are on to Parks and Rec. That is 4A, facilities improvement on page 221. And then we have Council Parker, would you like to put a number on the floor?
I move 43, $43,000 for 4A Parks and Rec facilities improvement.
Second? All right, moved by Parker, seconded by Russ. Hello, Mr. Berry, would you like to give us a synopsis?
Good evening. Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. So the projects that were proposed in, in the FYE '25 CIPs were identified through the community, through the recreational needs assessment, and also recommendations in the council-adopted recreation master plan. Those actions include, and this kind of speaks to all the different projects that we're going to be talking about, increased accessibility to natural bodies of water, and this is what we heard from the public, enhancement or renovations of parks and facilities, improved trail and pathway connectivity, improvement to existing outdoor athletic fields, an aquatics facility, and our continued commitment to making facilities more accessible. So the first project, the facilities improvements, do you want me to speak to what has not been cut, or all of the...
Yes, the 43,000.
Just the 43, okay. So remaining in this budget is $15,000 for the replacement of existing and installation of new benches in parks where the level of service identified benches as needed or in poor condition. That's $15,000. $28,000 was for surveying, engineering plans, permitting, bid documents, construction administration, and this is to replace, replace the paved ramp at Parazotti Boat Launch. The challenge right now for boat users, particularly those that are trailing boats, and that is a good site, there's parking for trailers. The challenge is the, the ramp into the water is too short, it doesn't go out far enough, and there is a drop-off, and typically what happens is trailers will bottom out, because you get to the end of the ramp, and there's a, you know, eight or 12-inch drop-off, and suddenly, yeah, exactly. So this was, this is, this project will begin to address the increased accessibility to natural bodies of water, which was one of the highest scoring needs identified in the community needs assessment.
Great, thank you. Council Boardaline, is your hand up?
Are you, is it showing up? It's not up on my end.
It is up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Can you tell me where the Parazotti Boat Launch is?
Sure, that's in the Calvin Burrows Park, so off of South Street.
Okay, so it's on the backside of the, where the ballpark is?
It is, yes.
Okay. I noticed there's another launch, I think, over in the Tanglewood?
There is, yes.
Is that being looked at also, too, or is it?
What, I'm sorry?
I just wondered if that's being looked at also, it just...
As...
It has issues, too?
Yeah, there, it's a different kind of boat launch, that's more for canoes and kayaks, I think, because of the depth of the water. I think the water is deeper going into the Puonic River than it is over in, what cove would that be? Whatever cove that is.
Puonic River? Yes, Puonic River, right?
At Parazotti, yes.
Yeah, at Parazotti, yes, yeah.
Okay, all right. And do you have an idea what, as global warming and sea rise keeps happening in this area, is that, are you taking that into account, as the water seems to be getting higher and higher?
Did we take that into, I think that would be part of the study, is recognizing what's going to happen in the future and planning for that.
Okay, all right. And then the benches, where will they be going, installation of those?
Yeah, I did not bring that spreadsheet with me, but we have a complete list. There was a level of service analysis done as part of the recreation master plan, and I didn't bring that with me this evening.
But they're in, they're in a different park.
They went through every single park and identified areas where we either needed a bench, and that's one of the enhancements that people are looking for. People are looking for more sitting spaces, and that's what we're, those are the actions that we're trying to take based on the recreation master plan.
Okay, all right. So there, it could be really anywhere. You're just going to scatter it around.
Yes, yeah, and we would purposely, looking at the list, we would purposely spread those out, so that there's kind of equity in, in the new benches, not focus them in one particular area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Council Boardaline?
Has there been any thought, some things I was looking at, you know, benches are also very important for folks of all different backgrounds, age ranges, you know, abilities to have to enjoy, but I did see that some towns were using the opportunity for folks to help purchase a memorial bench at our parks. Have we thought about that?
We do have memorial benches now, in some of our parks, so that is certainly a program that we could continue to explore and promote, if people were interested in doing that.
Yeah, because... Yeah, because, you know, if there's a need, if folks do that, there might be other people that might want to purchase one, which then takes the costs down or eliminates it for the taxpayer.
Right, yeah, I can think of three right off the top of my head that are memorial benches.
So is this something that you think that you could, like, put out first as a request? Like, hey, we're in need of three benches here, four there, two there, six there, whatever the number is at each park, you know, show that master plan, put it online, and put it out there, there might be somebody willing to, and then come back to us and say, hey, I put out a proposal for, in need of 15 benches, and you know what, I got 10 funded, I only need help with five, I don't know, just a thought.
Sure. Yeah.
It would cost nothing to advertise, it actually allows the community to get involved, and, you know, you never know, you might get some sponsors or other people that really want to do that, I don't, just a thought, and it's not a criticism, it's a way of looking at, I know under a lot of the other CIP, other budget lines, we're looking to cut, and this is a way of not cutting, but enhancing, in a way.
Counselor Boardaline, are you, are you finished with your time?
Um, no, I'm just trying to see, I guess my response would be, would it make sense, could you in conjunction vote that you're looking to seek people who want to sponsor, and then see if there's a positive revenue that could come back to the town?
That's what I was gonna, you know, I think it should be funded upfront, we haven't had a lot of success in the past, but we could advertise it, and if there's any money saved, it just comes back into the CIP fund, but I would recommend funding the full amount.
Okay, I can support this, if, if we're going to put the request out there, I think it's worth a try and see, I mean, even if one bench is a memorial bench, that's one bench saved. So how would this look, when would we start to advertise this in conjunction, or what would that look like?
Well, we already have the program, so I think we just have to put it out there more for a while, is that right, Mark?
Yeah, I think we should take a little bit of time, think about this, put together something rather than just rushing into it, but, you know, with our community outreach coordinator, I think we could put together, we've tried to keep all the benches as best we can uniform, so that we can, at some point, it's easier to replace parts when everything is, is the same, and, you know, we have picnic benches that have been in parks for a long time, we, we have run into challenges when people are interested in funding a memorial bench, when, you know, we try to get commercial-grade benches, so that they hold up, and there's sometimes a little bit of pushback, like, oh geez, I wasn't really intending on spending that much money, so we, we do run into that challenge, but I think if we remain firm, ask for a commercial-grade bench, define exactly what it is, and potential locations, we could move forward with that particular plan.
I like that, I think, I think it is important, yeah, to know exactly what you're looking for, so there's continuity, and I think that's appropriate, and that people know upfront what they can and can't purchase, if that's clear and defined, and the locations.
Just, it looked like one of the councils had a question of how much that is, we typically get a five-foot bench, and I think with purchase and shipping, it's around $1,200.
Counselor Boardaline, you still have time left, are you all set?
No, I think it's great, I know $1,200 seems like a lot, but sometimes a bunch of family members or a whole bunch of people will gather together to purchase it, you know, together for a cause, so I think it's worth keeping that asked out there, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll take a vote. On number 4A, facility improvement for $43,000, Counselor Boardaline?
Aye.
Counselor Pacino?
Aye.
Counselor Rusk?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Gajewski?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Aye.
Also an aye, that passes seven to zero to zero. All right, on next to 4B, page 222, Community Connectivity Program. Counselor Gajewski, would you like to move that number?
Motion to approve CIP number 4B, Community Connectivity Program, for $25,000, so moved.
Second, Jones?
Moved by Gajewski, seconded by Jones. Would you like to give us a synopsis on this?
Sure, so community connectivity continues to be one of the highest identified needs in the community, I think we've talked a little bit about that with Director Hanover, and we're asking for $25,000, which we would use as a match, we are aware that the state has committed in the governor's next couple of budgets, $10 million, towards trails and pathways through the Recreation Trails Grant, and we would intend to use this $25,000 as a match. Those grant matches are 80/20, so we put in 20%, the state puts in 80%. We currently, we have had success in obtaining Recreation Trails Grants in the past, we currently have one in for the Cop Family Park, to continue work on a Recreation Trails Grant that we received in 2017.
Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Berry, this is a grant, correct?
That is correct.
And have, now, would the, the matching funds would have to, they'd have to, when we get the funds, we'd match, correct, that's part of the grant?
Yeah, we have to show that we're putting in our 20% of the match, and they would match, the state would match that with 80%.
Is it possible to still apply for the grant, and then if we get it, then add the $25,000 after?
So you're suggesting coming back to the council?
Yeah.
After we have, after we have the money, or after we have the grant?
Yes.
I suppose that's possible, I would hate to think that we spent the time going through and applying for a grant, and then coming to the council, and the council saying, oh no, we don't think that's a wise decision, that seems like a waste of staff time, but that's my opinion.
And, I'm sorry, and what areas would this grant be going towards?
Tentatively, we're thinking the Wolf Brook property, but I can't say with all certainty, it would depend on how things line up with Wolf Brook property, as far as where we are in determining the best place for trails, you know, that is a recently acquired property, there was an interest in expanding the trail network out there, and so that is one area that we're looking at. We also, next year, will have our Complete Streets and Trails Master Plan completed, and that will identify a number of different opportunities, so I can't say with 100% certainty where exactly that money would go.
One thing, can I just say, it says currently that it, right now it's written that it's Wolf Brook, so if it's possible it's not, then Wolf Brook, if you do pass it, Wolf Brook should be removed from that, otherwise you're locked into Wolf Brook.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, you know, I have concerns with not knowing what property, I also would feel more comfortable, you know, applying for the grant and coming back, so I'm going to make an amended motion for zero dollars.
Second.
All right, zero dollars on the floor, moved by Gajewski, seconded by Pacino. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mr. Burt, we have, in the past, when we've gotten grants that we need matching funds for, we've been able to come back, you've been able to come back to the council and get those funds?
That's usually the way we do it, yes.
That's usually the way we do it, and that's worked pretty efficiently, and?
Yeah, I can't think of many that have been turned down in my time here.
Mr. Berry, when, when would you have been applying for, would you be applying for this recreational trails grant?
In the past, the state has usually released it in the late winter, and so we would be doing it, well, we, I think, the grant that we recently submitted for work at the Cop Trail property was due March, mid-March, so they usually announce it late January, early February. The state is on a pretty aggressive plan, so I have some doubts about whether they would be releasing the information about the FYE 25 grants in the timeframe that they've done in the past.
So you haven't applied for this, this particular grant?
Oh, no, no.
So this is somewhere in the future?
Yeah, this is for FYE 25, so this money would be used toward a grant that we're applying towards next winter.
Excellent, so it's quite, it's out quite a ways, so you could, you can easily live without the money sitting in your accounts, and if you win this grant, then you can come back, and then we can approve it at that time?
Yes.
Without any problem, okay. I think I'll just be supporting the motion that's on the floor.
Counselor Boardaline, is your hand up?
No, my hand is not up.
Okay, it does show on our screen that it's up. Counselor Russ?
It's definitely not on my end, I apologize.
Okay. Counselor Rusk?
Thank you, Director Berry, I absolutely support our trails in our community, but in a really tough budget year like this is, I'd rather not designate $25,000 to be held, I'd much rather have you just come back, I think a lot of, I'll speak for me, I'm definitely in support of moving trails forward, but I will be supporting the zero just because how tight this budget season is, with hopes that you do get the grant, and that you can come back in the future.
I do have a question, though, do you have to show the grant that you have approval of your funds before you apply?
That's, that's a great question, I can't, I would have to go back and look at the grant application, to see if that was one of the requirements, actually, I don't think it is, because in-kind work can also be part of the match.
You can get donations as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so some of the organizations in our area could also donate as well.
And typically, like Gosa, Avalonia, they're also applying for the same type of grants, it's very competitive, I think we received a notification from the state that they had 85 applicants, for a total of $21 million, and this is actually to be the second time that we have applied for this grant out at the Cop property. We scored a 91 last year, which is very high, and the director of the grant program strongly urged us to reapply. We were able to see where we scored low, and made some adjustments to hopefully make that a stronger application.
Thank you, I would just ask that you check your application, to see if you need to show that you have the funds, or how it is, and also, because I would not want you to, or to see if you have other opportunities to find funding from other organizations, who are very generous with their donations towards Open Funds and Groton, and, because I would not want you to apply for an application, I mean, a grant, and put in all the time and effort it takes to do that, without our funding being shorn up here, that I have concerns about you putting in that kind of time, prior to having the money assigned, because my thought is, odds are, if we're not assigning it tonight, I don't see us assigning it in the middle of winter, in a, in a very tough budget. Okay, I don't see any more hands, so we will vote on 4B for zero dollars. Counselor Boardaline?
No.
Counselor Pacino?
Yes, for zero dollars, that's who we're voting on, yes.
Yes. Counselor Rusk?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Gajewski?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
No.
That goes five to two to zero. That passes at zero.
And Mary, can we go on to 4C next, we don't have any budget for it, but Barker would like to present use of golf course balance, fund balance of the golf course fund.
For golf course?
For 4C.
Number 4C?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to 4C, which we have in our books on page 223. Mr. Berry, would you like to give us a synopsis?
Sure, after we received the town manager's recommendations, I spoke with the golf pro and the golf course superintendent, we took a look at the golf course fund balance, and proposed an alternative to the projects that had been proposed for FYE 25, the proposal was that we would use $200,000 of golf course fund balance, to continue the work, some of the work that we have been doing, you know, we have been focusing on bunkers, those consistently and historically get scored the lowest when we do our golfer satisfaction surveys, we do those every two years, so we're proposing that the, the $200,000 would be entirely funded through the golf course fund balance, as of July 1, at the end of FYE 23, the town had a fund balance of $909,815, so 909, $909,815. There is some money committed to vehicles, some money committed to encumbrances, but it would still leave us with a fund balance in the event of some type of catastrophe. The work that we're proposing would include, again, focusing on the bunkers, byholes 2 and 7, and potentially renovations on the T on 3, and fairway bunkers on 5, 6, and 7.
May I, may I just get this correct, you're looking to make improvements in the amount of 200,000?
That's correct.
And then use your fund balance of 200,000, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, I'll make, I'll put a motion on the floor for 4C. For $200,000, with the use of $200,000 coming from the golf course fund balance?
I'll second that.
For the amount of, it would be, do I pass the zero, or is it, or do I just need to say that?
No, it would, it would still be, it'd just be 200,000, and dictating where the money came from.
Okay, all right. Moved by Franco, seconded by Rusk. Do you have any other comments? Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How long did it take you to build up the fund balance to $909,000?
It took a while. Prior to COVID, well, I can tell you one year, we put an additional $1,500 in the pot, into the fund balance, at the end of one year. in the pot, i- i- into the fund balance at the end of one year. Um, it, it took us, our goal was always to have about twenty percent of the golf course operating budget in the fund balance in the event of an emergency. And I think it was two thousand eighteen, we actually ran into an emergency where, I think it was twelve or thirteen weekends in a row, in the spring, it rained.
I remember.
Yeah, and we ended up having to use our entire fund balance, um, that we had accumulated probably over seven or eight, nine years in order to balance the budget. Since COVID, um, we have, uh, our number of members have increased, the number of rounds have increased, there's a, a much greater interest in golf, and so we were able to build this up much more quickly. We do have, i- if you look at the CIPs over the next five years, I think it's three and a half million dollars. So, you know, this golf course fund balance is not going to be, we're not going to be able to, that's not going to solve all of our, uh, challenges that we face. But given the budget this year, we'd like to continue moving forward with the work that we've done almost on an annual basis. I mean, there were some years where we didn't get any funding. But, you know, we have made significant investments over the last couple of years. The council's been supportive, and we would like to continue that, um, towards the goal of making improvements to the golf course.
I, I do remember in many, this is my fifth budget, so I do remember some of those budgets where we were, uh, not two thousand eight, maybe two thousand eighteen, I think I was in the R T M, but I remember, yeah, going through some of them where they were negative or you were using them up. So that was definitely, a lot of discussions were on that.
Yeah.
Do you, are you affected, because you're doing, I, I don't know whether you are affected from not buying windows or air conditioning equipment. Are you affected by inflation a lot in terms of doing this kind of work, where you're replacing, fixing greens and that kind of stuff?
I'm not sure that I understand.
Like, I know when we, you know, looking at building materials have, have jumped a lot. Inflation has really affected building materials.
Oh, yeah.
Does inflation affect?
Most of the work associated with what we're talking about here is, is labor. Uh, you know, it's cutting down the greens, um, you know, replacing it with sand and whatever, and sod and seeding and things like that. So, um, you know, as, as wages increase, um, I don't think they've increased at the pace of what you're describing is like H V A C, where we've seen tremendous increases. It's, uh, you know, sand has not gone up that much, sod has not gone up that much. It, it's the labor associated with that and whatever those adjustments are.
Mr. Burt, does this effect, have any effect on our mill rate or our different funds?
No.
So this is sort of neutral for us?
Yes, I'm fully in favor of this.
Because it's coming out of the fund balance, so, okay. No, I'm in favor of it too. I think recently, I did, I think, you know, last year, I did a tour of the golf facilities and, um, we have, you know, a really terrific golf course here in southeastern Connecticut, and it's nice to be able to keep it up. And I know we've put a lot of money into restrooms and, and other improvements that we've done, so. Uh, I'm fine with this. It was just sort of wanting to make sure that, I mean, we're trusting that you know how much you can take out of this fund and not affect you sort of your emergency if you have to.
Right, well, my crystal ball's as good as yours.
Okay.
You know, and, and I will take this opportunity, and I've said this before, the, when we do the, the golfer satisfaction survey, one of the questions we ask golfers is how much they spend, and we've calculated that golfers bring into the area about four hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, through gas, meals, lodging. So, you know, there is, there is a payback to the community. The community does benefit, uh, from the golf course.
What's the overall budget of the, the golf course this year?
North of one, I, I don't remember exactly. Oh, wait, actually.
I was just thinking of that twenty percent, of that twenty percent number you were talking about.
It's, hold on a second.
It's about one point six two.
Okay, so you're fine then.
Just add on to the direct dollars generated, I'd also say, having amenities like this to your community also affects whether people move to it and, you know, affects your view of a community. So there's some intangibles there.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Point of information. Can I just ask, um, your nine hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollar fund ba- balance was as of when?
That was a report we received from finance as of seven, at the, at the end of F Y E twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. Um, and it is the bunkers by two and seven, renovation of the tee at three, and the fairways. I'm sorry, I just missed the ending.
Uh, fairway bunkers on five, six, and seven. That, that, those are the target areas. Whether the, the two hundred thousand will get us to all of those, um, is yet to be determined, but that's kind of our focus. We've been trying to focus on, rather than jumping all around the golf course, kind of, um, working in one area and just going around the course and making improvements, kind of systematically.
Thank you, thank you.
And after seeing any more questions, we will take a vote. On four C with two hundred thousand dollars funding and then two hundred thousand coming from the golf fund balance. Uh, Counselor Boardaline?
Um, I'm a little, I'm abstaining because I just not, I'm abstaining on that.
Okay, Counselor Pacino?
Aye.
Counselor Russ?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor, oops, Gajewski?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Aye.
All right, that passes six to zero to one. We are now on to four D, which is park investment slash A D A compliance, and it can be found on page two twenty-four. Mr. Berry?
What we are proposing is to continue to improve accessibility to parks. This particular project would involve connecting roads, um, through a, a path, probably a paved path, to, uh, to various playgrounds, or, I'm sorry, to di- to different parks. So example, Rahim Carter Park is off of the road, there's no real direct access. So we would be looking at, um, creating a path from the edge of the road going to the playground, which would improve accessibility, uh, to that particular playground. We're also looking to do this, uh, at Paquana Plains Park, we're looking to, right now, the bleachers sit out in the middle of the field, um, that are by the, the football field, and there's no great access from the walking track over to the, to the bleachers. So we're proposing to put, uh, probably not pave there, uh, we're looking at a different type of path. Excuse me. Uh, so that, uh, there's connectivity to the bleachers, because we are, by law, supposed to be by providing access. And, and we've, uh, worked with Public Works last year and they paved paths, um, at, to the bleachers, to both sets of bleachers at Sutton Park. So we've been, this is not something new for us. Uh, we've been doing this right along and wish to continue this, and this is all based on a two thousand and thirteen A D A study that was done. We had somebody come in, look at all of our recreation facilities, identify all the work that needed to be done, and we have, over the years, slowly been working towards making those improvements. Right now, we're, uh, out at par four, uh, making the, the bathroom accessible out there. Uh, starting July, middle of July this year, the Calvin Burrows bathroom, we will be, uh, making renovations to both the bathroom and the concession stand to make that A D A accessible. Uh, we did the same thing out at Escapoint Beach a couple of years ago. So this is kind of an ongoing commitment, and this is just continuing that commitment.
Thank you. Counselor Jones, would you like to move the number?
Capital program, uh, program project two?
Four, four D?
Four D, park investment A D A compliance for forty thousand dollars, so move.
Second, Gajewski.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Gajewski. Counselor Pacino?
Yeah, think of it, huh? Thank you. Um, my question is, uh, the five parks in question, are they, the playgrounds that are in those parks?
Well, there is, there's a playground at Paquana Plains Park, but that is already accessible. We're looking to make the bleachers accessible.
Okay, well, let me rephrase my question, I'm sorry. What, the items that you want to make accessible, whether it's a playground or bleachers or whatever it is, are those items currently A D A compliant?
No. Oh, uh, I'm sorry, are you asking if the playground at Rahim Carter is accessible?
Is it currently A D A compliant? Are we gonna put a, A D A compliance to it, to something they can't use?
Uh, no, the, so for example, at Rahim Carter, that playground is not fully accessible. The, the only fully accessible playground that we have is Paquana Plains Park, the Terra Centennial, because of the surfacing and because of the design of the park. But that doesn't mean that those with mobility challenges can't utilize some of the playground components.
Great, okay, that's what I was looking for. My, my other question is, um, are you going to get to all the parks this year, in two thousand twenty-five?
I'm sorry.
Are you going to be able to get to all the parks?
No.
No.
No, and we actually don't have to make every single park. The, the recommendation from the consultants was somewhere around thirty percent of the parks should be compliant or accessible.
I, I didn't mean all the parks in, in the town, I meant the five parks that are listed here. The five parks that are listed on this C I P. Are you going to be able to get to all five of those this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I'm good. Thank you.
Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Berry, um, I, I do want to applaud you. The Americans with Disabilities Act is, um, very close to my heart. I have a very close family friend. Um, with all their disabilities, they have overcome a lot and they are doing wonderful things, and I couldn't be more proud of them, friend. Um, I just want to thank you for doing everything you can, um, to, uh, get in compliance with the new requirements, and, um, I will be in support of this motion. Thank you.
Counselor Boardaline?
Thanks again for me. This one again is a no-brainer. It's important that we are achieving goals for all standards across all levels, um, for all of our constituents, no matter their disability, and A D A compliance is a must. Um, so I think this is, uh, vital, and, uh, let's move it along. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll vote on forty thousand dollars for number four D, which is park investment A D A compliance. Counselor Boardaline?
Aye.
Counselor Pacino?
Aye.
Counselor Rusk?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Gajewski?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Aye.
Okay, that is passing seven to zero to zero. Up next is four E, athletic field development on page two twenty-five. And Counselor Rusk, would you like to take that one?
I would, thank you. C I P four E athletic field development, I move the number of twenty thousand dollars for safety netting.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Rusk, seconded by Jones. Synopsis?
We are looking to put safety netting behind the lacrosse goals and soccer goals on fields one and two at Paquana Plains Park. The lacrosse, you, Groton Youth Lacrosse Association has reached out to us, and they are concerned about the safety of those using the walking path. They're concerned about vehicles parked in the parking lot, um, particularly from errant, um, walls missing the goal and, and traveling across the path and into the parking lot. And I, I can tell you that the balls have hit the building. There are a number of perfectly round circles in the siding on the building, so it, it is happening. And, um, we're looking to address that on those two fields. And these would be temporary fences, um, they would be up for the season and then for the lacrosse season, and then come down and go up in the fall for the soccer season.
Counselor Boardaline, is your hand up? I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Somebody was coughing.
No, my hand is not up.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, um, I work in athletic, I work in an athletic department, and, um, we share our track with the lacrosse team, and, um, we do not have full safety from netting. Dens happen, um, nobody's gotten seriously injured, and, um, I just, I appreciate others' concerns for this, but in a tight budget year, um, I cannot support doing this project, um, so I'm going to put a motion on the floor to zero dollars.
Second.
All right, moved by Gajewski, seconded by Pacino. Counselor Jones, are you listening to me?
I guess so.
Okay, go right ahead.
I walk that park a lot. Like, I was, like, almost, not every day, but pretty much, you know, three times a week, four times a week. Would this netting be just on the, the parking lot side?
No, it'd be on both sides.
It's on both sides?
Yes.
I certainly have been down there when soccer balls have gone whizzy by my head, but, um, I do agree with, um, Counsel Gajewski on this one, that, um, in a tough budget time, this may be just a little bit more than we need. But I do feel for the, the parents and the kids in the cars down there, so, um, I will be agreeing with the motion that's on the floor, but, um, it's, it's a, it's a tough one to do, so. Is there just a little question on it? Is there, is it, is it a stand that stands up, or how does it get, does it get mounted into the ground, or what would it have?
Yeah, there would be a sleeve put in the ground, and then the post would fit in the sleeve.
Okay.
And the sleeve would be kind of at ground level behind the, the nets.
And how high would those nets have been?
Oh, I think they were fourteen feet high.
So they're pretty high.
Yeah, yeah.
Does something like that affect your, um, the grounds crews, having to go around all of these things?
Yeah, it makes more work for them.
I think I'll go with the motion that's on the floor, but, um, it's, I do understand, so, thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure if Counsel-
I just want to, my hand is up, just, now it went down.
Okay, Counselor Boardaline, go ahead.
Counselor Boardaline, you're muted.
Um, yes.
Okay, we can hear you now.
Um, I just don't, when this was built, we haven't had the safety net the whole time? We haven't had the safety net the whole time, or is this something that broke and we were trying to replace?
No, we have not had safety netting in the past. But it was an issue, a concern that was raised to us, and
Right, and this part-
we chose to address it rather than ignore it.
Right, um, I think safety is very vital and important, so I just think there's ways to kind of fit that. It's a very low-hanging fruit, it's not going to affect the budget that much, twenty thousand in my opinion. But I am, you know, shocked that we haven't tried to fund this sooner, since those nets have been there for quite some time. Um, I would be supporting, you know, the safety concern. I would be supporting, you know, the safety concern. We need to make sure that we're, you know, you're able to safely walk the track while people are also playing, so I think it is important. Thank you.
All right, I have a very quick question. I don't play soccer, so I don't know how tall the, the goals are at the moment.
Those are probably eight feet high.
So they're eight feet high, and there's nothing that you can put on the back of them to make it so that the balls won't go beyond them, to make them taller? Like, towards the back of the netting?
Well, it's not only up, it's also out.
Right.
Because somebody taking a shot, and that's what these nets are designed to do, is catch those balls before they come across.
Right, but you're looking to put poles in the ground.
Yes.
Like, for 20 grand. I'm wondering if there's something that could be connected to the, the goal, on the backside of the goal, to go out and up and over and around, if there's a way that, without having to put, like, such permanent structure. I don't know anything about soccer, so I'm just asking.
Right, yeah, well, these nets would not be permanent.
No, but you would put them in the ground. They are, like, during the season.
The sleeves, the sleeves, yes, the sleeves would be in the ground permanently, the poles would be in for the season, and then they would come out, and then we would put them out the following season.
Right, so we'd have poles on the ground, big giant netting, hoisted up, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I'm just wondering, because I don't know how the goals work in soccer, towards the back of the goal.
Right.
Is there anything that they can do for the goal itself to just put up so that even if you miss the goal?
Right.
There's a netting towards the back of the goal?
Right.
Like, up and around it, and over the sides?
Yeah, I guess we would have to look into that, whether you could put extending poles. And then the other thing is, you also, you have to consider high school regulations and what you can put on goals, and what can't be put on goals, and I don't know if high school, you know, Connecticut High School Athletics, whatever that governing body is, would allow us to put wings on the side of the goal, and put a column, put a net up above it.
That's very good terminology, I would agree, wings, because I wouldn't know how else to call it, but I don't know the rules either, and I don't know soccer, so I'm just asking if there was another option. At this time, I will also be supporting the zero on the floor because of the potential difficulties we are facing within this budget, and how long has the soccer field been down at Paquana Plains, in the walking track?
Longer than I've been here.
Okay, all right, I don't, I don't, I see a concern, but as it's been there that long, I don't know how much urgency at this moment there is, so I will be supporting the zero at this time. All right, I don't see any more comments, so we'll take a vote. Council Bordaline.
Um, that's for zero?
Correct.
No.
Council Pacino.
Yes.
Council Rusk.
Yes.
Council Jones.
Yes.
Council Gajewski.
Yes.
Council Parker.
Yes.
All right, six to one to zero, that passes. We are on two. No, neighbor, no, I'm sorry, we are on to education. Thank you, Mr. Barry. We are on to education number five S. Want to take a recess?
Yeah.
Sure, are you trying to say something to me?
No, I was just...
Okay, I didn't know if you were looking at me and trying to say something.
Are we doing the Board of Education, CIP, the night that they're presenting?
Point of, it's a point of information in our budget calendar packet, it says Board of Education Budget for Tuesday, April 16th, and then Board of Education Fiscal Year 2025 Capital Projects.
Okay.
Underneath that, so I believe we could skip Board of Education tonight.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, could we take a recess?
Yes, please, let me just get this sorted out first.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, that's correct. On our calendar, we will do the Board of Ed and our CIP at the same time. So let me just check, up next would be Public Buildings, is that correct? Okay, then, so at this time, it's been requested that we take a recess, and we will take a 10-minute recess.
Recording stopped.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Will this project replace all the windows in that building?
Yeah, I think except for the little basement windows.
Okay.
But all the ones on the, you know, on the main level, yes.
And are there any issues with the little basement windows?
No, no. They were, I think they were done not too long ago, so.
Less than 100 years ago?
Yeah.
Okay.
Less than 30 years.
Okay, seeing no more hands, we'll take a vote on this. $100,000 for number 6A. Mr. Counselor Bordaline? Counselor Pacino?
Aye.
Counselor Russ?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Gieske?
Aye.
And Counselor Parker?
Aye.
That passes seven to zero to zero. All right. Up next is 6C Town Hall Complex, page 236. And because I sort of made an error in who read the last motion, I will go to Counselor Pacino, you were up next. Would you like to put a number on the floor?
Are you sure? Okay. I would like to motion for Public Works Buildings 6C Town Hall Complex, $75,000 to install the CTTV system.
Second. Moved by Pacino, seconded by Parker. Would you like to give us a synopsis?
Sure. Currently, we have a couple of very old DVR, I guess, tape-type systems for both the tax collector and the assessor's area at Town Hall. You know, they're pretty low-quality, not very reliable recordings we get there. So we're looking at replacing that and then also expanding coverage of other parts of Town Hall where we have had incidents with visitors such as a judge of probate. Though we also have the outdoor ballot box, although we have a, I guess I'll call it a temporary camera on that now, but that would be all part of the same system. We've been putting a system in at both the community center and at Thrive 55, which have been very good for us. So we're looking at doing that same type of system to these areas of Town Hall.
Okay, Counselor Gieske?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am in favor of this proposal. As Director Hanover just mentioned, this will also be tempor, this will take over the temporary replacement we have for the ballot box and with the presidential election. And lack of confidence, unfortunately, in our election security across the state and across the country. I want to ensure that in Groton, we are doing everything in our power to preserve our election security and making sure that every ballot is legally cast and we follow the law so we can have faith in our elections. So I wish we didn't have to do this, but the way society has slowly gone, it is a necessity and I will be in favor of the motion. And I thank Director Hanover for bringing this to our attention along with the Town Manager.
Counselor Pacino?
I unfortunately would like to amend this motion.
What number?
I would like to forward the number of zero.
Counselor Pacino has zero on the floor. Do we have a second? Don't see a second.
No, it's okay.
All right, we still have, we still have $75,000 on the floor for number 6C. Any other comments? Okay, well, I will speak saying that I think it's important to have the cameras out at the ballot box, and that's why we put the temporary up, and to have permanent ones there with a good picture and to have the recordings done properly, and to have systems at our tax window, which currently have two separate systems at the tax windows and the assessor's counter, I think is important. And I'd like to get us up to modern times a little bit instead of having DVR tapes. So thank you very much for this one, and I will be in support of it. All right, with no other hands, we will be voting on $75,000 for number 6C. Counselor Bordaline?
Aye.
Counselor Pacino?
No.
Counselor Russ?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Gieske?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Aye.
Okay, that passes six to one to zero. We are now on to 6D Groton Public Library. Counselor Parker, would you like to take that?
I'd like to move $550,000 for Public Buildings under Section D for Groton Public Library. So moved.
Would you like to add another funding source?
I will amend that to add a different funding source. So I would like to have the amount to be $350,000 from the CIP and $200,000 from LoCEP. I so moved.
Second, Russk. So is it, let me just ask to put it clearly, do we put the $550 on the floor and then do?
Yes, you just, yeah.
And then do 200 from LoCEP? Is that correct?
Yes.
So $550 on the floor with 200 from LoCEP? Is that correct?
Uh huh.
And that was moved by Parker, seconded by Russk. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, want to give a breakdown?
Okay, we have two projects going on here at the library. The first is the underground fuel storage tank, the 6,000-gallon fuel tank for the boiler is reaching its 30-year life. And under DEEP regulations, we either have to replace it or we can get a 10-year extension on that life if we do a few upgrades to it on the secondary containment for the piping and the monitoring system. So that cost is estimated to be about $75,000 versus replacing the tanks would be around $300,000. So because, you know, we're still kind of looking at different options for heating in the future there, you know, I don't think it's worth replacing the tank for another 30 years. I'd rather just spend the $75,000 for the 10-year extension and then decide, you know, what we're going to be doing in the future for the heating and cooling, or heating at the library. So that's why that's in $75,000. The second project is the roof replacement for the 1995 addition area. This roof is approaching, you know, almost 30 years old. We have leaks in it, which we're constantly repairing and trying to keep up with, but we can't seem to keep up with them. We did have funding last year for the design of it. The designs are all done and we're ready to go out to bid. And the construction estimate is $475,000 for the roof replacement. And, you know, I think it's important that we keep the library dry so we don't have issues with mold and water in our books.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very disappointed, Mr. Hanover. I really love buying boilers. I've bought quite a few boilers over the years, and I was so looking forward to another boiler purchase this year, but I guess we'll just have to wait. And I think this is a great, great, great way to help get extended life of that, of that boiler and, you know, affordable, and we're always looking at different ways of heating our buildings and cooling. So I applaud you for this nice creative way of finding a way to disappoint me on my boiler purchases. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the floor, we have $200,000 for LoCEP funding. I was wondering if the Town Manager could briefly explain to those at home what LoCEP funding is and how, and any potential savings that may result in using LoCEP dollars?
Sure. LoCEP is local capital, is local capital program. Yeah. It's a state program. They provide a certain number, a certain amount of funding to every municipality each year. This year went up a bit. We, this is a pretty good amount for this year. As I mentioned earlier, we're actually receiving just over $300,000 and proposing $200,000 usage. If we didn't use the state funds, we would be paying for it ourselves. So this is an outside source of funds that offsets what we would pay.
Thank you for explaining that, and we, I appreciate using another source of revenue as this is a $550,000 cost, but a cost that needs to be done to replace the roof in the Groton Public Library. So I will be in favor of the amended motion, and I thank Director Hanover for his presentation and the manager for bringing that information on LoCEP dollars.
Point of information?
Your point of information.
When we are recording our numbers of budget, do we record it as 350 as opposed to 500?
Well, the expenditures are still 550, it's just the financing that changes.
Financing. Okay, so we still?
It's another funding source. So it's, it's like in this, if you're looking at this page?
You're still spending as much, you're just taking some from another pot.
I see that you have in front of you page 214, and there is a column that says other funding source. You can write $200,000 in that column to keep track of your funding sources. So.
And then 350 would come out of the budget?
It's 550 with 200, and yes, 350 would actually come out of the budget, not the 550.
That's what I, that's my point of information. It's 350 out of the budget, not 550.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other hands, so I will just say, building infrastructure and maintenance is not glamorous, but it is absolutely very important, and I will support this as we do not want our buildings. And the contents of our buildings deteriorating, so with that, let's take a vote. 6D, $550,000, using $200,000 in LoCEP funds. Counselor Bordaline?
Aye.
Counselor Pacino?
Aye.
Counselor Russ?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Gieske?
See.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Okie dokie, that passes seven to zero to zero.
I'm gonna play that game, okay.
Oh, gosh, game is on. All right, so we are on number 6F, which is the Town Hall Annex, oh, no, 6.
6F.
Town Hall Annex, 20 Bay Garage.
Oh, the line, the line goes to the next section. So it is 6F, Town Hall Annex Complex, 20 Bay Garage. And Counselor Gieske, would you like to move that one?
I would be honored, Madam Mayor. I move that we, for CIP number 6F, Town Hall Annex Complex, 20 Bay Garage, for $30,000. So moved.
Second, Jones?
Moved by Gieske, seconded by Jones. Want to give us the information on that?
Our 20 Bay Storage Garage, just kind of just located right behind us here, was built in 1985. The roof that's up there is original, so it's, you know, approaching 40 years old. So we want to get some design work done so that we can get some plans and cost estimates to get that replaced, you know, along with some metal copings for, to meet the current hurricane standards. You know, this building does house our expensive equipment and plows. I mean, you know, it would be safe to say it has millions of dollars' worth of equipment in there that, you know, we really want to keep dry, especially in a storm. So that's what we're looking for here, is just the design money for $30,000.
Do you have any comments? So I'll take a vote on number 6F for $30,000. Counselor Bordaline?
Aye.
Counselor Pacino?
Aye.
Counselor Russ?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Gieske?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Aye.
That passes seven to zero to zero. We are now on 6H, the Jabez Smith House. And Counselor Jones, would you like to move that number?
Capital Improvement Program, 6H, Jabez Smith House, for $60,000. So moved?
Second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Parker. Ms. Hanover?
Yep, the Jabez Smith House is, I think it's from 1783. It's a very historic house in the town. It was turned over to the town with the understanding that we would preserve and maintain it throughout the rest of its life. its rest of its life.
Can I just interject right there? Part of that, Grasso Gardens, the ambulance facility, all that's on the same piece of property that came with this, and there's a reverter clause, so we want to maintain it. And I have been approached by, or reached, some of the family reached out to me recently checking on some of this.
Yes.
So we recently, because, you know, some family members reached out, they're concerned with it, we did go down there and do, you know, a, an inspection of the facility. And there's, you know, some items that, maintenance items that need to be addressed. One is the handicap ramp that leads up to the door so that, you know, it's accessible to everyone. It was installed in 1993. It's in pretty fair to poor condition. And the next items are the painting of the main house that was last done in 1998. It's peeling pretty badly in some areas. And then the carriage house, which is the garage, it's a newer vintage building, but it still needs to be maintained. We do have a handicap accessible bathroom in that building for when the building is open for tours. And then also the oil-fired boiler does need to be replaced. It's a very small one, residential size, so it's not too expensive. So those four items, you know, total up to about $60,000. There were a number of items that we were able to take care of in-house, which we've already been, which we've already done.
Do we have any comments? Okay, seeing none, we are going to vote to maintain our infrastructure on the Jebaz Smith House. Counselor Borderline?
Aye.
Counselor Pacino?
Aye.
Counselor Rusk?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Gasky?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
All right, that will pass, seven to zero to zero. All right, up next is six L, leased buildings, that's on page 240. Counselor Rusk, would you like to move that one?
Yes, CIP six L leased buildings, I move the number of $50,000.
Second.
Moved by Rusk, seconded by Parker.
This is the Groton Ambulance Building, which is on Route 117, right next to the Jebaz Smith House. The Groton Ambulance Association has approached us and asked us last year to repaint the exterior of the building. When we started really looking at it, there's, we found a number of other issues with some rotting boards and trim and a few things like that that really need to be repaired as well. So we put together a plan to do all that, and we estimated the cost is $50,000. So that's what this project is, you know, and I will, and I'd be remiss if I didn't point this out, but I will say that the lease that we have with the Groton Ambulance states that, you know, they are really, they're responsible for the exterior maintenance of this building, but if the town has funds available, they, you can elect to, you know, do the projects, fund these projects for them.
Okay. Can I just hear that again? You're saying our lease says they take care of the interior and exterior?
Yeah, they're responsible for the entire building unless there's some major structural issue or damage to the building, you know, a tree falls on the building or fire or something like that. But they're responsible for the maintenance of the interior and exterior of the building, and the town may, if they determine that there are funds available, we can give them funds to do that work.
Okay.
So they requested that this work be done, so that's why we put it in the CIP.
All right, sounds good. Counselor, Mr. Mc, hold on a second here. Mr. Burt, do you have a comment?
I was just going to say, I didn't realize that that would fall under them. I would say with all the cuts that this would not be the year to fund this personally, but just my own two cents.
Okay, Counselor Borderline, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I think that in this year, it doesn't seem physically responsible to fund it. Again, in 2023, they were at $105,000, and we moved them up to 341,000. And then this year, they came back and they came down to 300. They've had almost a 200-something percent increase. You guys have not, or no one has brought them back to the table to renegotiate their asks. I think that they, we should not fund this this year, thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to move a number of zero.
Second, Gasky.
Zero for six L, moved by Borderline, seconded by Gasky.
And again, I already stated, just, you know, we allocated 300,000 to them this year, which is still from 2023, 2022, it's from 105,000, so.
Do we have any other comments on this number on the floor? Okay, seeing none, we will be voting on the amount of zero for the leased building for the ambulance.
Point of information?
Yes. Your question?
Are they going to handle this? Because now that it's been identified, I mean, they should be maintaining it, is that correct?
There, I do not believe there is anything that will force them to do this. This is just saying we will not pay for it at this time.
I'm just wondering because of the lease, they have an obligation to maintain the structure.
Mr. Burt?
I haven't read it in a while, Craig, do you know how it reads?
Yes, it says, "The leasee, which is Groton Ambulance, shall perform, timely perform all maintenance, repair, replacement of the premises, make sure it's in neat, safe, clean, and good working condition."
Right, and my question is, I know in the past there was a whole big write-up that we were delayed on certain repairs, and if this has been identified, I just don't want the structure to go into disarray and it be our fault. Thank you.
Mr. Burt, I know you, as you said, you haven't reviewed the contract, but there is nothing in place that would force them to do this at this time, is that correct? Unless...
Well, if we made an issue of it, we thought it was detrimental to the safety of the building, and they're required to maintain it, I think we could. And just mentioning, I think we only have a year from September till this is, contract ends too, so, you know, we can work, I think we have some time to work through it, so.
Okay. I also think I'll pull out my papers from the lease because for some reason, I remember we were agreeing to paying for the outside of the building, and they were required to pay for the inside of the building. From my memory, that's how I can recall us approving that lease.
Your point of information?
Your question?
Still, if it's unclear, my motion is because if it's their responsibility, if we found out health-wise, it should come back to the table.
Maybe we should take a moment. I, me personally, I would take a moment because I don't know where I stand on this because my memory serves me as we took care of the outside of the building, they took care of the inside of the building.
Can we take a couple-minute break, and we'll, I'll look it up?
That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to be in recess for, let's give it 10 minutes because we never take five.
Recording stopped.
We are back from recess. Mr. Burt has reviewed numerous documents. And what is the verdict?
They are the ones responsible. But we have said if we had money, we would help. But yes, they are ultimately the ones responsible.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hanover, you are correct, I guess.
Logically.
We've had a second opinion on that. Counselor Bordelon, your number is zero on the board. And you had a question related to, you had a, if they, are they required to do it within the year? Is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think it's important when they identify. The only reason I'm speaking is because before there was a lot of problems with, we weren't keeping up with the maintenance. That was the public's image. And in fact, if they're required to stay on this, then they should respond to whatever needs to be adhered to and not let it, you know, get worse. So that's my concern. So, but anyway, I appreciate the clarification and I support the number of zero on the floor.
Okay. Any more comments on this motion? All right, we will take a vote. Counselor Bordelon.
I'm in support of zero.
Counselor Pacino.
Aye.
Counselor Rusk.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Gieske.
Aye.
Counselor Parker.
Aye.
I am also an aye. That will pass seven to zero to zero. Up next, we have six M police. And Counselor Pacino, would you like to move that number?
Sure. I'd like to move for six M Public Buildings Police, the number of $500,000.
Second. Moved by Pacino, seconded by Franco. Mr. Hanover.
All right. The police station projects, there's actually two of them. We'll start with the underground fuel tanks. It's the same situation we have at the library. In fact, these tanks were put in the same year by the same contractor. There's two of them there. There's a 6,000 gallon for heating oil and a 1,000 gallon for diesel generator. They're getting to the end of their 30-year life. So again, we're, I'm recommending that we spend about $200,000 just to upgrade both tanks to get another 10 years out of them, because to replace them in kind would be around $500,000. So that's the first project. And the second one is a project that has some previous funding. It's the locker room renovation. Those $250,000 was approved in FYE 24. We've gotten the plans. We actually went out to bid with this one. The bids, we had six bids. We got in August of '23. Their prices range from $500,000 to $650,000. So we've estimated the cost with the contingency at about $550,000 for this project. A lot of it is due to the extensive HVAC upgrades that need to be made for this space. So we're looking at an additional $300,000 request so that we can get this needed project out to bid again and get it done. It's been a long time in the works and I know the chief is really anxious to get this one built. The town manager did ask me to look to see if we could separate the HVAC from the locker room project. I mean, technically, we could do that, but the prices, because you've got, you know, two separate contracts, you've got some inflation, because one will be a year down the road, so to speak, you get some mobilization costs, would end up costing about, estimated a little over $600,000. So it'd be, you know, a little bit more money. Plus, you'd be disrupting that space twice, you know, moving the police out. Because when they do the HVAC work, they gotta replace most of the ductwork above the ceiling. So they have to move out there to a temporary location. And then you'd have to do the same thing, you know, at a future time when you do the locker room renovation. So I would recommend that we just, you know, get the thing done at once as one project rather than splitting it up.
I'm very supportive of this. We've been trying to get this done since I first arrived.
Counselor Bordelon, your hand is up. I'm not sure if it's a technical difficulty or if you would like to speak.
On my end, it's not lit up. Thanks for checking.
Okay. Counselor Gieske.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am in favor of the motion on the floor for two reasons. I am concerned about the air quality of the HVAC system. And I was actually recently in that locker room when I met with Chief Fazaro last, sometime last year, and on a one-on-one meeting. And working in athletics and being a college athlete, I've been in a lot of locker rooms. And this one needs some upgrades. It is one for, it's just, it's just very 1970s, very 1980s-ish. It's just, it's out of date, in my opinion. And then I also, since it's out of date, there's been a lot of police equipment. I'm concerned about storage police equipment, and I think it is desperately needed. So I will be in favor of the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Counselor Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you just discuss the $250,000 from FYE 23? Was that spent already or is it being held for the rest of this money?
No, well, the $250,000 was approved in FYE 24. That was actually LoSiP funds that was approved last year.
And what was done with that money? What was done with that money?
Nothing, still sitting there.
It's still sitting, that was my question. And what about the women's locker room? Is it in the same?
That was redone when we did the addition on the building 20 years ago. It was all, all brand new then. So that one's in good shape. The dispatcher's locker room, the same.
Was it 1979, just 20 years ago? No, just kidding.
I like your mouth.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hanover, I know we've been, this has gone on for never years, the locker rooms in the police station. Will this $500,000 complete this project?
Yes.
So this will, this won't be coming up anymore as a CIP?
No.
And I'm noticing in...
Fingers are crossed.
We've a long, as you also know, our program, extra funds, we don't have to.
Point of information? Your point of information.
It's only 300 for the locker room, correct? And 200 for the, the tank?
For this year, yes. So for the lockers, we had 250 approved last year, and then an additional 300, so it'd be 550 total.
All right, so, all right, thank you.
For the project.
I noticed in FYE 26, 27, there's additional HVAC equipment. Is that for a different portion of the police?
That's other areas, like the administration area, they have a lot of issues there.
Okay.
Some other areas of the building.
But this project will, will finish this off.
Correct.
I've been in that locker room a number of times, and I agree with Counselor Gieske. It's much need of an upgrade. Also been in the other locker rooms, and it's quite a difference. Those are in much, much better shape than, than this one. So it'd be nice to have them all come up to the same level. Thank you, I'll be in supportive of this.
All right, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm seeing any more hands.
My hand is up.
Okay. Counselor Bordelon.
I'm yes. I'm in full support. I've been in there and can see that it needs to. Unfortunately, it seems like it's been sitting for many years prior to even being involved politically. So I'm not sure that, you know, the piecemeal project or, you know, this large lump sum amount is pertinent. I mean, that's the problem with it being delayed often. We couldn't even put a motion forward to complete, you know, 20,000 on a safety net. And we talked about critical budget time. So this is a large amount of money. I guess my question is to Mr. Hanover, what could we do and what couldn't shave off years we had?
We had looked at potentially, there's a lieutenant's locker room, which is a separate, same vintage. We had looked at potentially taking that off, but, you know, the estimates to remove that renovation there were very small. You know, we have done a lot of value engineering on this already to keep it down. So, I mean, I don't think there's really anything else we can do to get it any lower. I mean, we, you know, we, obviously, we'll go out to bid and, you know, take the lowest qualified bidder so that, you know, we can get the best value for the town.
Again, I think it needs to be done. I've seen it. It just is unfortunate to the taxpayer that it sat so long that it becomes critical now in a tough budget season. So, very tough.
Okay, thank you. Okay, not seeing any further hands. We will take a vote on six M for $500,000. Counselor Bordelon. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said aye.
Thank you. Counselor Pacino.
Aye.
Counselor Rusk.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Gieske.
Aye.
Counselor Parker.
Aye.
That passes seven to zero to zero. Up next is six O, Townwide Door Access System. That's on page 242. And Counselor Parker, would you like to move that one?
Make, sorry. Make a motion for $85,000 for CIP six O Townwide Door Access System.
Second, Gieske.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Gieske. Mr. Hanover.
This is our key list door entry for pretty much every town building that we have and for all our, you know, employees. And the system that's there, the hardware is obsolete. We can't even get parts to fix it anymore, and the software is also obsolete. We did upgrade the police station, so that building is not needed. But, you know, we did get a quote from the vendor to upgrade the rest of the buildings in town. And, you know, the funds needed are the $85,000.
Does anybody have any questions? Before we begin, I just have a real quick question. Does this also include the Mystic Restrooms? It does, it's not written up, but things have popped up recently and it was discussed.
Yeah, no, that, we actually, we have that in my operating budget.
Okay.
To do a locking system there, so we'll discuss that Thursday night.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Who is going to be supporting the, the system? Would it be a vendor or would it be town staff?
Well, we have town staff can do some of the programming, the FOBS and stuff, but we do have a vendor that comes in when we have, you know, issues with the hardware or software.
So day-to-day staff, we got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Bordelon, I'm not sure if your hand is up.
No.
Okay. I don't see any more comments or hands for comments. So we'll take a vote on six O for $85,000. Counselor Bordelon.
Aye.
Counselor Pacino.
Aye.
Counselor Rusk.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Gieske.
Aye.
Counselor Parker.
Aye.
That passes seven to zero to zero. We are now on six P, Spring Street Seawall. And Counselor Gieske, would you like to move that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move for object codes, CIP six P, Spring Street Seawall for $175,000. So moved.
Second, Rusk. Moved by Gieske, seconded by Rusk. Mr. Hanover.
This is a masonry wall that was at the end of Spring Street. Now, just to familiarize everybody, Spring Street is kind of a steep road that goes down to West Cove, which is where Spices Marina is on that side. In last February in 2023 during a snowstorm, one of our snowplow drivers slid down, took the wall out and had the truck actually overhanging the wall. We were able to get it off. Luckily, it didn't go in the water. The water's literally right there at the edge of the road. But it did take the wall out. We had an engineer come in and said it, you know, really did not meet any safety standards whatsoever. So that, you know, completely needs to be replaced down to the ledge in the water. We did do a design. We've got our DEP and Army Corps engineer permits. I did, we did look into whether our insurance company would cover this or not, but unfortunately for this type of loss, it's a $500,000 deductible. So we're not even close. But we have estimated the cost to reconstruct it is about $175,000. And right now, we just have some Jersey barriers at the end of the road there.
I do hear from people down there about it, so.
Okay. Do we have any comments? Counselor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would imagine after this repair, the Jersey barriers will get put away somewhere. But with that said, what, what barrier will be in place to keep any other vehicles from sliding into the new wall?
The plan is for a concrete retaining wall with, you know, have like a deformed face that looks like stone, but it'll be tied back into the road. So if, you know, a car or truck hits it, it's not going to go anywhere.
Okay. Thank you.
Because what was there was just, you know, rubble with masonry, like something you see like for a decorative, more decorative type wall.
Well, it will have two of those concrete portions coming over. It's basically going to be shaped like a T with a...
Yeah, it's gonna be like an L-shaped.
L-shaped?
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Gieske.
I feel it's important to ask this. Was the driver okay?
Yes.
And what damage was done to the truck? Or plow, sorry?
You know, I don't even recall. There was some damage done to it that was repaired, if I remember correctly.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I have gone on snowplow ride-arounds with your drivers, and I'm glad I wasn't on that one. That would have been quite the story. So without us seeing any other comments, hands up, we will take a vote on $175,000 on six P. Counselor Bordelon.
Aye.
Counselor Pacino.
Aye.
Counselor Rusk.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Gieske.
Aye.
Counselor Parker.
Aye.
That passes seven to zero to zero. We are now moving on to number seven, Technology. Thank you, Mr. Hanover. I am going to request that we take up seven J first in this item while we're on Technology. And seven J is Police Evidence Processing Command Vehicle. That is on page 249. And Counselor Jones, would you like to make the motion?
Capital Improvement Program, Capital Improvement Program, Police J, Police Evidence Processing Command Vehicle with a sum of $250,000. So moved.
Second. All right, moved by Jones, seconded by Rusk. Do we have somebody here to speak on this?
We do have Captain B online.
Good evening, Captain B.
How's everyone doing tonight? Can you hear me okay?
We're doing well, thank you. We can hear you fine.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Would you like to give us synopsis?
Sure.
Sure. So in the description, so this is a part of a CIP that we applied for last year and we're, we're granted some money for it as we began our research to try and locate a vehicle. Obviously, with demand and pricing, the money we were initially granted was not suitable for what the vehicle, what we were looking for in the vehicle. So the vehicle is, you know, it's going to be used for any types of crime scenes, major events that we would host in town as a command post, you know, and a good example is for the, as the chief has mentioned in the past, most recently, three fatal motor vehicle accidents, the homicide in town, the Irish Day Parade where it would be a vehicle where officers can go into if needed to take a break, or it's used to transport crime scene equipment, accident reconstruction equipment, evidence processing equipment, and a central location for, you know, like I said, a command post where the incident commander would run any type of operation out of. Due to the expense of these vehicles, we've, we've even researched used vehicles, and those are actually very difficult to find. And the ones you do find really aren't worth putting the money into because you'd have to spend an excessive amount of money to rehab it and get it up to, you know, operating state, and then you still have a vehicle with 100,000 miles on it. So we're, we're looking for additional funds to purchase, you know, a van-type vehicle for crime scenes and any other type of major events in the town.
Thank you. Mr. Bird, I have a question for you related to how this is. It also says that the funding for this was going to come from 250,000 from CIP fund balance.
Right.
And let me just ask a question. If this does not get funded, that frees up the 250,000 from fund balance?
Correct.
And then last, we have already approved 125,000. Is that from?
Twenty, from, 24 from just capital projects.
Just CIP?
Yeah, just CIP.
So we can use, potentially combine those together and use those 375,000 against whatever remaining items in technology? Is that correct?
Anything in capital projects. Yeah, anything going forward if there was enough to use it, or going backwards if you wanted to reopen something.
Okay.
And I will be upfront. This is about the first time I haven't fully supported something for police. I've talked to Chief Pizarro. As what we having, have going on, this isn't something I think we can fund right now. And matter of fact, with resilience increasing, I don't foresee being able to fund this anytime in the near future.
Okay.
Could I make a motion?
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just let me know if I'm not doing this correctly. I'd like to make a motion to zero out the Police Evidence Processing Command Vehicle J of 250,000.
To zero is on the floor then.
To zero.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Pacino. Did you want to speak on it, or are you?
No, I just, I have a question. Do we do anything on the 125?
You could reallocate it somewhere else.
Do I put that into the motion?
Could. Well, unless you just want to do it separately when you get to another item.
Point of information, the 125, did that come from CIP last year or did it come from ARPA funding?
CIP. I double-checked.
The 125 was, was approved in FYE '24. That's our current budget year. You can't re-
I would sweep them out and then we'd reallocate. I'm going to sweep those if they want.
Okay.
Or just close that CIP.
Okay, all right.
So we don't have to?
Do I need to make a motion on that then?
We can do it now, or we could do it separately. It's up to, Mr. Bird said it's however we want to handle it.
Pretty flexible.
You must do it now?
Go ahead.
Yeah, all right. So, and I will also move the 100, is the proper words, like I will authorize the town manager to sweep out the 125,000.
Close out.
To close out 125,000.
Second, Gajewski.
So the motion on the floor is for 7J at $0 and close, close out that capital improvement project, which would release the remaining 125,000 that was allocated last year back into the, it would be going into the CIP fund balance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Point of information.
Your question?
Would that still be Counselor Pacino's second?
I'll withdraw my second.
I have Counselor Pacino as a second.
I will continue to second the remainder of the motion.
Okay. So you are, you are okay with the change to it?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think Counselor Bordalyn.
I think she said point of information. Do you have a point of information, Counselor Bordalyn?
Yeah. Yeah. So the ones, the remaining amount, wouldn't it make sense if we allocate that to the CIP that we just did?
Well, we have, I think we have about 420. So if you take the 250 plus the 125, 375,000 available, for the rest of the project on our list outside of, you know, of course, wastewater, water pollution, there's 420,000 left to be funded. If you funded all those, you could spread it out through those. Once you get to the final plan of conservation development, you have about 5,000 left to offset that. So you just keep using it along the way.
Just use it like a bank. You just kind of roll it out.
I would also like to state that, just depending on how we go, in this account for technology, the remaining items that are listed from A through G tally up to $370,000 if those go through. Okay. Do we have any more comments on this? Okay. We'll be taking a vote on 7J to close out this account in zero and return the 125,000 back to the CIP balance, CIP fund balance. Counselor Bordalyn, your vote?
Aye.
Counselor Pacino.
Aye.
Counselor Rusk.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Gajewski.
Aye.
Counselor Parker.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero to zero. We will now take up 7A, which is Information Technology Infrastructure, which is on page 244. Oops, sorry. Counselor Rusk, would you like to move that number?
Yes. CIP 7A, Information Technology Infrastructure, move the number of $135,000.
Second.
What funding to come from?
Did you want to use any fund balances?
Sure, for $125,000, funding to come from capital improvement.
No, you're going to do the whole thing, all these ones. If you fund them all, you use the, all, they'll all be offset. You have 375,000 offset now.
Point of information, the 250 was not allocated yet. Was it already in?
Plus 125. You have 375,000.
We already had allocated the 125,000. That was from last year.
Where did you do 125?
The 125,000 was allocated last year.
Yeah, we swept it back out. So now it's available.
My question is, $250,000 was never allocated. So how are we taking that $250,000?
That's CIP, it's CIP fund balance. Now adding the 125, you have 375,000 fund balance in CIPs.
Thank you. Now I understand. Okay. So $135,000. Let me start this over.
All right, wait a minute. Let's just, did, who, did somebody give a second? Because I hadn't recognized it.
No.
No, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, I hadn't recognized it. Would you like to?
I will wait till she finishes her motion.
Thank you. Counselor Rusk.
CIP 7A for Information Technology Infrastructure, I'll move the number of $135,000 to be taken from capital fund balance, CIP fund balance.
Second.
Okay. So I have, it was 135 on the floor, using 135 from this CIP fund balance.
Correct.
Moved by Russ, seconded by Parker. Do we have any comments? Counselor Pacino.
Yes, for Mr. Bird. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I don't understand, I believe what we just did was not spend $250,000.
Yeah, but it wasn't general fund. It's just, we need to, to, because you weren't, that wasn't tying up general fund dollars. That was just CIP general fund, fund balance. So if you don't allocate it, it's really no change to the budget. We're actually going to use it to decrease the budget or the amount of fund, of property taxes needed.
So the CIP fund balance is like our savings account?
But just for CIPs. It's not the general fund.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay, now I get it. Thank you very much.
So if some CIPs come in under budget, the money gets swept back out into the-
So this money was already in that account. It would, it was already-
After we did the Sutton Park-
It would already burden the taxpayer, so.
After we did the Sutton Park project, that's what was left, basically. I think about 300,000 total.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Okay. I don't see any other hands. Is there anybody here to speak on this, first of all? Because I don't think we've got a synopsis.
Jay Mayne's here, yes. Jay Mayne's online.
Mr. Mayne, would you like to give us a synopsis on this?
All right, good evening. On 7A?
Yes, please.
On 7A. Yes, 7A, the funds are requested for infrastructure.
It's very, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayne, but it's very difficult to hear you.
Sorry, is that better?
Little bit better, yeah.
Okay, so this isn't, these funds would be dedicated for infrastructure, which would include servers, switches, firewalls, software upgrades, basically the backend of everything that, that kind of runs the town's software.
So really important things.
Sure is.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other hands. So let's take a vote on 7A. 135,000 with 135,000 being used from the CIP fund balance. Counselor Bordalyn. Counselor Pacino.
Aye.
Counselor Rusk.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Gajewski.
Aye.
Counselor Parker.
Aye.
That passes seven to zero to zero. Okay, up next is 7B, Enterprise Resource Planning on page 245. And Counselor Pacino, would you like to take that one?
Why, yes I do. I'd like to, motion, CIP 7B, Technology Enterprise Resourcing Planning for $50,000.
And would you like to use?
Oh, I would like to use the CIP fund balance.
For the amount of?
$50,000.
Second.
Okay, we have that moved by Pacino, seconded by Rusk.
We'll get this by the end of the night.
Okay. Mr. Mayne, would you like to talk on this one?
Yes, these funds are being requested for Enterprise Resource and Planning. This is to continue our efforts with migrating from some of the various services the town has been using over to Tyler Munis, which a lot of our services have already been migrated. This is continuing with that process.
Okay. I'm not seeing anybody's hands. All right, we're going to take a vote on this for 7B, $50,000 with 50,000 coming from fund balance. Counselor Bordalyn, CIP fund balance clarification. Counselor Bordalyn? Counselor Pacino.
Aye.
Counselor Rusk.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Gajewski.
Aye.
Counselor Parker.
Aye.
All right, that's, it passes seven to zero to zero.
The next one's me.
Up next is 7D, IT Security, page 246. Mr. Mayne, want to give us a synopsis on this one?
Do you want me to do the motion first or no?
Sure. Yep, the security, CIP 7D, these funds are being requested to take various actions to decrease our vulnerability to cyber attacks. This would include disaster recovery planning, endpoint protection systems that, that help to automatically respond in the case of an attack, and, and just an overall to shore up our security in general.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Parker, would you like to move the number?
I make a motion for 73,000 to come from the CIP fund balance.
Second.
Okay, so 7D for 73,000, and then 73,000 coming from the fund balance?
CIP fund.
I mean, CIP fund balance, seconded by Rusk. Any hands that would like to speak? Okay, we'll take a vote on this one, 7D. Counselor Bordalyn. Counselor Pacino.
Aye.
Counselor Rusk.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Gajewski.
Aye.
Counselor Parker.
Aye.
That passes seven to zero to zero. Up next, 7F, Municipal Parking Solutions Software, and that's on page 247. And let's just move the number first. Counselor Gajewski.
I move to use 75,000, $47,000, not 75,000, $47,000 for CIP 7F, which is Technology Municipal Parking Solutions Software. So moved.
Second, Jones.
Do I need to redo it?
I did not recognize your second. So can you please say that one more time? I didn't, I didn't hear.
I'm, sorry. I was looking at the finance department over there. I move $47,000 for CIP 7F Technology and Municipal Parking Solutions Software. So moved using, oh, I'm going to start again. Time to charm. I move to use $47,000 from CIP fund balance for 7F Technology Municipal Parking Solutions Software. So moved.
Second, Jones.
Thank you. So what I hear is $47,000 for 7F with 47,000 coming out of the CIP fund balance. Okay.
And I think we have John Reiner online. Mr. Reiner, are you online?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Would you like to give us a synopsis?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So yes, so we're looking, in last year's CIP, you had allocated $150,000 towards our effort of updating our plan of conservation and development. We do this once every 10 years.
This is the parking, John.
Oh, this is parking. Oh, I'm sorry. This was something that actually the chief of police was working on with us. Okay.
So let me allow Captain B to talk again.
Yep.
Captain B, would you like to give us a synopsis on the municipal parking solution software?
Sure. So I have, we worked with OPDS and got a consultant. And during that time, so we're looking to implement one of the recommendations of the study to include a holistic approach to the enforcement and streamline the process of parking enforcement in Mystic. So it's going to be done by a municipal parking solution that includes software and hardware that will provide the tools and technologies needed to manage parking in Mystic. This is not metered parking, just so you know. This is an approach that the officers can enforce parking current violations that occur down there now. This is a, an approach that the officers can enforce, uh, parking current violations that occur down there now. In a nutshell, it's, it involves, um, a handheld device that the officers would use to go down into Mystic, uh, provide them live street information on the vehicle that they're going to potentially issue any parking violations to. Uh, it makes the process of paying the fines easier for those who receive a ticket. They can pay online versus now where they have to either mail in cash or a check or come to the police department and pay. Uh, so this will also allow us for better accountability for the tickets that are issued down in Mystic.
And, um, Captain B, as my understanding, I know you can't physically chalk tires nowadays. This does an electronic version, I'm taking photos, does it not, on the handhelds?
Yes, it, yes, it does. That is correct.
You can no longer actually check where a tire is anymore.
Thank you. Counsel Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Captain B or, or the town manager, there are currently, um, signs for that limit some parking, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So I'm going to have to yield the floor.
Better write those down.
I know.
Counsel Bordelon? It shows that your hand is up.
That is correct.
All right, would you like to take a, go?
Yeah, I, I do think this is important. A lot of folks have, you know, said a lot of concerns about violations down there not being enforced. And I do think our system is archaic. You know, looking at other towns, other states, you know, where folks can electronically pay without having to mail a check. I don't know when's the last time I really wrote a check, you know? And having the availability, I think, is also going to help reap the fines at a much faster rate and as it was stated, more accountability. And I think people will be more, um, you know, if you go on a vacation and you happen to get a violation somewhere, you might not remember that or you don't have a paper trail, you know? So having this electronic system and someone can pay right away is so much more accessible. So I, I think it's smart because people have been concerned with.
Are you all set, Counsel Bordelon?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any question, any other commenters. So I will speak and let you know that I am also in favor of this. Our community in the meetings that we've been having have been overwhelmingly in favor of trying to turn over parking in areas where we have signs that say, you know, limited parking, certain time limits. So I'm in favor of this. Mr., uh, Captain B, real quick question. Does this also print out the ticket?
Yes, it does.
Oh, even better. I am in favor of this. It prints out the ticket, you could pay by online access. I mean, takes pictures. I mean, this just fits the whole gamut. And also in the write-up here, it says it will generate revenue for the town, which will eventually pay for the financial outlays for this system. So I appreciate that as well. So I will be in favor of this. Thank you. Are there any further comments? Counsel Pacino?
I just have a quick question that really doesn't matter. What is the price of a ticket down there? Captain?
I, I believe, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Burt, didn't we just recently increase some of the fines down there from $10 to $25 or $20?
Okay, thank you very much, Captain.
Yep.
Okay, no further questions. We'll take a vote on this one. Counsel Bordelon?
Aye.
Okay. Counsel Pacino?
Aye.
Counsel Rusk?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Gajewski?
Aye.
Counsel Parker?
Aye.
That passes seven to zero to zero. Up next, 7G. Town Meeting Room AV Presentation Equipment Replacement slash Upgrade. And I have Counsel Jones, would you like to put that one on the floor?
Capital Improvement Program 7G. Town Meeting Room AV Presentation Equipment Replacement and Upgrade. $65,000 to be paid from capital improvement CIP funds. Did I say that right? So moved.
Second. I think you did.
Yeah.
Um, Counsel Jones moved it and Counsel Rusk seconded. $65,000 for 7G with $65,000 coming out of the CIP fund balance. Hello? Wow, you've waited here all night just for this moment. Would you like to give us a synopsis? Thank you.
Jennifer Miele, Library Director, and Sean Reilly with GMP.
So, uh, this is, uh, the fifth year of the equipment upgraded to all the, you know, town meeting rooms and conference areas. There's a town hall and the town hall.
I am having trouble hearing, I apologize.
I'm sorry. I'm not used to this in life. And I actually might have the answer right up there. Can you get me that? Counsel Bordelon, can you get me that?
I, no, I heard the folks, the folks from the library, but I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay, so, um, I'll try to say that.
You need to speak directly into the microphone. Damn, that hurts. That's good. I just teased. Please continue, I'm sorry.
So, uh, we're, we're about, uh, almost through with the library as well. We have, uh, the last area of the learners, uh, we've got all three of them. So we have parts where I expect to have some already ordered. And then we're working toward, uh, private type, and I think what exactly. So this last, uh, this fifth year, uh, we involve the, uh, police station, uh, there are conferences, conference rooms, and, uh, a training room. And then also, uh, a lot of the control has a, a training room upstairs. Uh, a lot of the buildings will be under that. And, uh, also, uh, human services. So we take care of, uh, the equipment for us, the rebuildings. And as you know, we, we're making this, uh, very much up to date, uh, for video conferencing. Basically, a lot of these touchscreens are going in, uh, which are basically giant laptops and brings us, uh, more connectivity, uh, for top staff and for public meetings.
Okay. Do we have any comments by counselors? Counsel Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand that this is the last one, but, um, this is a tough budget year and this is something that I am comfortable, um, waiting to do until next year. So I'm going to make an amended motion, um, to put, um, $0 for this year and push it, um, until next year.
I have. A motion for 7G for zero. Do I have a second?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Do you have any comments?
I, that's what I need to say.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually would be voting against this motion on the floor. I, I want to commend the library and the library staff and, and Sean particularly for the, the effort you have done to kind of wire us all up. I think it's brought a lot of efficiencies to our meetings and allowed us to do things and, and, um, just tying the. This is sort of the last piece of the system, right? So I, it's nice to keep all the technology, basically within the same year, couple of years that you, you've done it. Things grow and change so quickly that I, my fear would be if we moved it, things just become out of date and now you're trying to patch stuff. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, a pretty good assessment. You've seen actually in this room in this building, generation one, uh, touchscreens that were put in were now up to generation four, and that's, uh, three to four years. So it, it's moving very fast.
Do you, do you have a plan to, to deal with that? Sort of the upgrading, the things that are sort of four years behind?
Yeah, there's, uh, it's a lot of the, uh, a lot of it is to do with, uh, some features, uh, that are nice to have, but not critical. I think, you know, a lot of that can be resolved too, uh, with the PC portion of it. We're, we're using a lot of the PC side of this. So that, that's where you're going to do more of the, uh, features. So we have to, uh, that's the nice thing about these touchscreens. Uh, you know, the PC gets a little bit out of code. You won't have to buy the whole touchscreen again, you can just buy the, the PC insert and, uh, there you're up to be.
Just there. Just a question to the library director. I know we've directed most of this equipment to all the staff and people and counselors and RTN and people like that. Do, or do our regular residents have any access to this or has it helped with the communication and stuff?
Absolutely, I do not wait until, um, ours is actually installed at the library because our public meeting space, meeting rooms wanted to, um, are used, I, there's almost fights over the room people can use them. And having this upgraded technology, we have, it's not just lectures, it's public meeting space. So anybody, nonprofits can use the room. And having this upgraded technology has been, you know, will be a great changer for the public. We're also, you know, looking at, um, we, we already installed one, uh, monitor in our activity room. So that, that's another meeting space that people can congregate and utilize. And also in meeting room four, we'll be also placing a monitor. So connectivity is vital and important to these meetings today. So yes, the public will be utilizing that.
And the residents have access to, to just use that? Is it free for them to use this?
So when they rent, uh, or reserve, uh, meeting space, um, they ask if we have the ability to do X, Y, and Z. And yes, they will be able to utilize that. We help to set them up.
Just want to add one more thing. The other thing, a portion of this project is also for public meeting spaces like this room, uh, room, uh, two over here, uh, private five, the library's main meeting rooms, is bringing it to ADA compliance. So we're, we're putting in assist hearing devices and they're all basically going to be working the same. So it's definitely a, a moment that the public is, is going to be able to utilize. And then when there's also large meetings in theater, uh, whether it's a town meeting or, or, you know, some other program that, that happens in this building, it's not just always used for, for town meetings. They can receive where the staff will set it up for them as well. So these four public programs as well.
So is the, the hearing, I've noticed sometimes residents in here are using hearing enhanced, um, devices that you will give them so they can hear the meetings better. Is that what you're talking about and other?
Yes.
That's the same thing, just spreading it out?
So you can add a closet amendment, you just have a device that's tied into our sound system. So there, we have a sound system and these devices are going in as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counsel Rusk?
Thank you. I just want to say that I watched firsthand during COVID when Sean upgraded so much. Um, and I, I saw how vital that was. And I think we need to complete that process because we're just going to have to be continually upgrading. Um, and I know you guys have gotten a lot of grant money, um, through PEGPISA and other grants. So I truly appreciate that. I will be supporting this number, um, the 65,000, um, because I feel like it's important that we continue this process. And I know this is a tough budget year and, and I know we're looking at making a lot of cuts. But I think accessibility is extremely important for everybody. Um, and I think we have all witnessed the improvement of this room and the senior center and the library. And, and I know that it's the same way in government offices. So thank you for bringing this forward and, um, I'll be supporting the original number.
Counsel Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This question is for Mr. Burt. We've been working down that $375,000 number. And at this point, before we used the 65,000, we're at 117,000. So this money.
I'm sorry, say what? Can you repeat that? I'm sorry, I just.
We've been working down that 375 number. We've, we've used 135, we've used 50, we've used 73. We're now at 117,000.
So we used 47.
I forgot the 47.
Yeah, we've used 305.
In either case, with or without the 47, uh, the 65,000 is still going to be coming out of the CIP. Is that correct?
Correct.
It's not going to affect the mil rate because it already has.
Correct.
I am going to be, I'm not going to, uh, thank you. I'm, I'm not going to, um, go along with this, uh, vote for this amendment. I'm sticking with 65,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Bordelon? Is your hand up?
Yes. Yeah, I second the motion, just the stuff that, uh, you know, I'm torn, I do think it's a tough year, but I also do, I'm a big firm believer in making sure folks have, uh, the information they need. Uh, we've seen other towns that don't have as good technology. I know the city is trying to update their technology, which is behind. Um, and sometimes it's tough to engage in those meetings. So I think the town has done a great job, um, and I'd like to see to move that forward. I can appreciate Counsel Gajewski's, you know, uh, motion, uh, but I, you know, again, uh, you, you can never be as transparent as one needs to be. Uh, there's a lot of people that I know that watch the meetings and, uh, they find it to be very, very helpful. I find it to be very helpful to re-watch meetings to find information, uh, to perform my own preparations, going back, uh, to old meetings and finding how we voted and what was said. So, you know, I just do think that it's vital and critical, uh, to have the leadership base and all the energy to be able to do our work. So I will be supporting the original number. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Counsel Gajewski?
I have heard my colleague's statements and that is four votes, so I will be losing on this vote. So in the interest of time, I'm going to withdraw my motion if my colleague Counsel Bordelon is willing to withdraw her second.
Counsel Bordelon, are you willing to withdraw your second on this motion?
I'm sorry, are you asking me to withdraw the vote?
Are you willing to withdraw your second on this motion? Because Counsel Gajewski is trying to remove it from the floor.
Uh, sure, if that's what he wants to do, yeah, if he wants to remove it, sure.
We are withdrawing the motion. All right, the zero motion is withdrawn. We are back to 60, uh, 7G with $65,000, with $65,000 coming from the CIP fund balance. I don't see any other, uh, hands up. So we will take a vote. Counsel Bordelon?
Aye.
Counsel Pacino?
Aye.
Counsel Rusk?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Gajewski?
Aye.
Counsel Parker?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to pass that one, seven to zero to zero. Thank you. Okay. All right, so from my calculations, before we move on, I believe we still have another 5,000 in CIPs we can use. I will make a, put a motion on the table that we use 5,000 in CIP fund balance to go towards 6D, the Grand Public Library, and add another 5,000 to that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. 6D minus 5K.
You can also apply it to the next with a P O C D.
I'm just going to leave it there. Already made the motion. All right, I have, I'm, made the motion. Counsel Parker seconded it. Any comments, questions, concerns?
Test this one.
60, it was the library roof. Yeah.
Point of information.
Your point of information.
Do we need to stipulate that we're doing then $345,000?
Do I need to notate the number on the floor or can I just apply it towards that one? one?
It's good to notate that you want the $5,000 to change from a CIP reserve expenditure to, well, actually, that's LOCP, to $5,000 CIP fund balance. So you, so the whole, the whole project for 6D is 550. So you want 345, 5, and 200 for LOCP.
Correct.
Yeah, to change funding.
Can I just make the motion right now to add the $5,000 in CIP funds to 6D? Can I just make that motion? Or do you, do I need to spell the whole thing out?
To change, not to add. Otherwise, we'd be putting 355.
Understood. To apply $5,000 from CIP fund balance to 6D. Is that okay? Okay.
Yes, just lower it.
Yep. I still second that.
All right. Thank you. I have a second with Counselor Parker on that one. All right, let's take a vote on that one. I don't see any hands. Counselordaline.
Aye.
Counsel Pacino.
Aye.
Counsel Rusk.
Aye.
Counsel Jones.
Aye.
Counsel Gajewski.
Aye.
And Counsel Parker.
Aye.
Okay, that passes seven to zero to zero. Okay-dokey. We are now on to 8B, which is on page 250, which is Planning and Development, open space, oh no, I'm sorry, 8F, Plan of Conservation and Development. I have Counsel Rusk, you're, would you like to put the number on the floor?
Absolutely. CIP 8F, Plan of Conservation and Development. I would move $50,000 for development of the POCD.
Second.
Now I think that's why Mr. Reiner is here. Mr. Reiner, you want to give a synopsis?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Second time's the charm. So last year, CIP, the council had awarded $150,000 for us to hire a consultant to work on the POCD. This is something that we do once every 10 years. We had also planned on starting another grant-funded, larger plan, the Climate Action Plan, and kind of working those two documents together in a lot of our outreach and engagement. We still don't have the paperwork all finalized with the state on that Climate Action Plan, so we hadn't really started the outreach for that yet, which we were kind of hoping to work the two together and maybe have the POCD cost a little less. I'm now concerned that we don't have enough money set aside specifically for the real public engagement that we need to do on the POCD. You know, as we've seen some of these plans and documents that we do, if the public's not engaged at the level that we need them to be, the value and what stuff, some of the stuff does for us isn't really as great as it should be, as well as just, I think, the breadth and depth on some issues that we have to dive into on this POCD, specifically housing, excess property reuse, and some other big items. I want to make sure that we have enough funding to get this done right.
Any questions?
All right, thank you. Do you have any comments? I don't see any comments. So we will be voting on 8F for $50,000 for Plan of Conservation and Development. Counselordaline. Counselordaline? Okay, we will move on. Counsel Pacino.
Aye.
Counsel Rusk.
Aye.
Counsel Jones.
Aye.
Counsel Gajewski.
Aye.
Counsel Parker.
Aye.
Counselordaline, are you there?
Yes, it cut out. I just want to make sure I heard. This is exactly $50,000 for Conservation and Development, is that correct?
For the Plan of Conservation and Development, yes.
So it's like a study, or is this money going directly into something? I'm confused.
We're in the middle of a vote.
I'll abstain then. Thank you.
Okay. That passes six to zero to one. All right. We're moving now on to Water Pollution Control Authority. We're on to, I guess we're going to be on 10B, Pump Stations, page 252. Mr. Hanover, would you like to fill us in?
Yep. This is the Burgess Park Pump Station, which is a small pump station in a neighborhood that's over by I-95 and Clansby Sharp Highway. Design funds were approved last year in FY23, which is, design is currently underway, so we're looking at $1 million for the pump station replacement. And just so everybody remembers, the $1 million is all paid for by the WPCF user fees, not by general taxation.
Is that your sewer tax?
No, the sewer user fees.
Sewer user fees.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all you got?
I just wanted to get into technical details on the pump station. It's a sewer pump station. There was a question before what it was.
Okay. Do we have any comments, questions? Counsel Pacino. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's put the motion on the floor. That would be helpful, wouldn't it? Counsel Pacino, I'm on, I'm up to you to move, put something on the floor here. You want to move the number?
Oh, sure. Let's do that. Okay. I like the motion to put 10B, Water Pollution Control Authority Pump Stations, for $1 million.
Second.
All right, thank you.
I've done this $1 million.
Moved by Pacino, seconded by Parker. Okay, we are now on to, Counsel Pacino would like to have some comments and questions.
You said it was from, wasn't from the sewer taxes, it was from something else?
The sewer user fee. So everybody that's connected to sewer, to the sewer system, you know, whether commercial or residential, they pay a monthly, well, commercial pays monthly, residential pays quarterly, but essentially they're paying like a utility. So if you're connected to sewer, you're paying a, we call it sewer use fee, which is a utility bill.
Okay.
And that funds the, you know, the whole operation is funded 100%. You know, all the processing, the collection, all the salaries and everything is paid 100% by that sewer user fee.
Okay, because we all pay that evidently.
In my mind, it is.
We've been calling it sewer taxes.
Yeah, that's in my mind, too. Okay, so my bust. Average residents who pay that quarterly bill, it's, we just consider it our sewer tax.
Yeah. I mean, it's like a water bill or electric bill. I consider it a utility.
But it doesn't come, it's not going to affect our mil rate.
No.
No, it's a different tax.
It's all that matters. It's what we're all here for.
It's a separate tax bill. Separate. But you have to approve it.
I approve.
Counsel Jones.
The alternative is not good.
Even those of us who don't, aren't connected to sewer, pay it, so it's--
You pay, everybody in the town pays sewer taxes, sewer district tax, and that pays for the bonds for much larger projects because the thought is that it benefits the entire town, so everybody should pay for that.
No, I know. I asked that question.
Versus the actual sewer user fee, which are those people that are just connected. So yeah, if you're not connected, you're not paying a sewer user fee. If you are, give me a call because you shouldn't be.
Just, can you just tell me about how much money we bring in with the tax each year?
Sewer district tax?
Yeah.
I mean, we're paying--
I don't have those numbers.
We're paying a lot of bills out of it.
I mean, I could get you any, so when we go over it Thursday night with our, with the sewer budget.
That's fine.
I don't know if Dee has that right there.
Oh, look at Dee. She's quick.
It's actually, it's on page 115 of your book.
115?
Yes. Under the financing plan, you can see--
115.
The sewer user charges. So for fiscal '24, we're estimating about $7 million.
$7 million, okay. So that pays for everything. It pays for the wastewater treatment plant, it pays for employees, and it pays for any improvements and that kind of thing that we do. And bonds, too, that we, that we might have to pay for these things.
Yes.
All right, thank you. No, I, it's, that's fine.
Counsel Rusk.
I'd just like to make a clarification for the people at home. This is, you said all residents in Groton pay this, with the exception of City of Groton residents, because they have their own sewer. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
But they can contribute if they'd like.
Donations are welcome. All right, I don't see any more hands, and I would just like to, so I'm going to just take a turn. So on any of these pump stations, is there a possibility to get grants to help offset any future needs or upgrades, or saving them from water and, you know, from climate change or federal funds? Because we've heard so much. So I'm just trying to help.
Yeah, there's potential for some state clean water funds, which is really a loan. We could, you know, if we have a bigger project, we can look at those type of programs. We are trying to get some resiliency funds, grant funds for like Gravel Street Pump Station, so that, you know, when the Mr. River floods, we're not losing our pump station. So there are funds for that type of work. But to, you know, just to replace pump stations, we'd have to look at some of the state programs.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your answer. I wish there was more.
Yeah, I wish there was more, too.
More grants. All right. Any other comments, questions? All right, so we will take a vote. Big vote on 10B for $1 million. Counselordaline.
Aye.
Thank you. Counsel Pacino.
Aye.
Counsel Rusk.
Aye.
Counsel Jones.
Aye.
Counsel Gajewski.
Aye.
Counsel Parker.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero to zero.
Oh, it's bad to me.
Up next is the Water Pollution Control Facility, number 10C. That's on page 253. And Counsel Parker, would you like to move that one?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for $60,000, which will come from the WPCF user fees. I so move.
Thank you.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Jones.
This is $60,000 for planning and engineering costs to upgrade our existing mechanisms and structural repairs to one of our primary clarifier tanks at the treatment plant. The equipment in the tanks are, you know, original 1970s, so it needs to be replaced. So we're just doing the engineering for that. And again, this is all paid out of the sewer user fees.
Do you have any questions? Counsel Pacino.
I'm going to regret this question. What's a clarifier tank?
Primary clarifier is the first stop for sewage. That's where the heavy stuff settles out to the bottom and becomes sludge.
Gotcha. I knew I regret it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Before it goes, you know, further on in the treatment train.
Doing a tour.
I'm not taking a tour.
Very informative.
It is a great tour.
I'm sure it is. You can tell me about it later.
I love sewer tours.
Sean filmed a tour.
I don't see any other hands, so I'll go. Let me just ask you a quick question. Is that where the, is that the tank that has all the, what looks like Legos floating all over it?
No, that's the irrigation tank.
Okay.
It has, they look like little pieces of pasta or something, little plastic.
Yeah, they look, well, sort of like Legos. Yes, they do. You should take the tour. We've been on the tour.
I've been meaning to ask since I got to the county.
And go all the way down.
I know.
I think this is the official request for a tour. Those of us who are newer.
We'll try and organize some things.
We could have a council meeting there.
We could do it. Live. Okay, so back to, like, I know we're silly right now. I think this is our last item. So we are on 10C for $60,000. Counselordaline.
Aye.
Thank you. Counsel Pacino.
Aye.
Counsel Rusk.
Aye.
Counsel Jones.
Aye.
Counsel Gajewski.
Aye.
And Counsel Parker.
Aye.
All right, that's seven to zero to zero. And just to make sure, is there anything left on our agenda for this evening? It's just simply CIPs tonight, is that correct?
Correct.
That's what I have. Okay.
Motion to recess until Thursday, April 11th, 6:00 PM. I so move.
Second.
No seconding. We're recessing, so I acknowledge your recess and thank you for putting that out. We are now recessed. I believe it is 9:58, 9:49. Thank you.